Good evening. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and I'm going to ask Laura Lee to please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman. Amy Doran.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessen.
Here.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Here.
Thank you, Laura Lee. And Nancy, would you please lead us in the pledge? It's right up here behind us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy? All right, our first item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda so we can be forward. So I would like to, it's for September 4th, which is today, and are there any changes or additions to the agenda for tonight's meeting? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So.
Second.
Stu and Dawn. All right, Laura Lee, will you call the roll, please? You got the first and second from, okay.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessen.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
Mr. Harling? All right, next item is we get to see the presentation from Lincoln Elementary. So I'm turning it over to... There you are.
Brandy Stott, principal.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Madam President, distinguished board. Dr. Schaefer, first, I would like to start by presenting our Lincoln 5th grade students led by Jared Robertson. They're going to sing our school song that she wrote for our students. Just haven't got away with performing it today. Yep, that'll be good. I'll slide down. I'll slide over this way.
We're small but mighty, so we squeeze in real loud.
This is 4th and 5th. Right, can you see all the people who you love with you there?
Yay! Hi!
Oh, hello.
I am, I'm Jared Robertson and I'm the music teacher here at Edmondson and also at Lincoln. And let's start from the very beginning. It is the beginning of the school year and it's a really great place to start. When you read, you begin with?
A, B, C.
Oh, oh yeah, yeah. And when you sing, you begin with?
Do, re, mi.
So we're gonna do a little bit here for you. When we come to the music classroom, we start out like this. Keep the beat on your lap, ready go. And then your shoulders, then your head. Do, mi, mi.
Do, mi, mi.
Do, fa, fa.
Do, fa, fa.
So, mi.
So, mi.
Fa, re.
Fa, re.
Mi, re, do, so, do.
Mi, re, do, so, do.
Now, this year, we've just kinda gotten started this year, Dawn, and we're working really hard on making sure in 4th and 5th grade that we are super solid with our multiplication facts. So here's our sixes, ready? And.
Six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, thirty, thirty-six, forty-two, forty-eight, fifty-four, sixty. Lots of sixes, lots of three. Now, let's do it again.
Very good. And we're like, well, maybe we could do the threes. Shall we do that?
Three, six, nine, twelve, fifteen, eighteen, twenty-one. Twenty-four and twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-six.
Let's hear it. Now, we had decided that we wanted to have a school song so that we could show our support for our Lincoln Leopards. And I couldn't think of anybody better to write a song for them, this group of 4th and 5th graders, because they are amazing. And so I wrote this song, and so I hope that you enjoy it.
Oh, we are Lincoln Leopards, here our mighty roar. We stand proud and strong, we age and soar. We show our spots to all we see. We're Lincoln Leopards proud, mighty and to be. L-I-N-C-O-L-M, Lincoln Leopards till the end. Roar!
Our 4th and 5th graders are working really hard and they are amazing and we could sing you several different songs. But because of time constraints, we do know that you probably have other things to do. And so if you could give them another very big round of applause.
So we're so proud of our 4th and 5th graders especially. They're getting ready to go on an outdoor education experience in a couple of weeks, our 5th graders are. So I'm Brandy Stott, I'm the principal here at Lincoln, and we are so pleased to have you this evening. Laura Lee, if you want to go to the next slide, that'd be great. This is our mission here at Lincoln, where we're really working on achieving our personal best, collaborating in authentic learning. And by that, we mean getting out and doing things in the community, field trips, partnering with outside partnerships and things like that. And then embracing both creative and critical thinking. So that is something that our students hear at least a couple of times a week over our announcements and a lot of them can come up and tell me how they're using their thinking during the day. So we're really pleased with that. This year, we've been really focused on continuing to climb our mountains, our mountain ranges. That's how we launched the school year. So our presentation today is really about starting off the school year, mostly because we're three weeks in, four weeks in, roughly. And so I want to kind of talk about our journey to where we're at right now. This summer, we were fortunate enough to be able to participate in the district-led PDs around SEL work, data analysis, PLCs. And that was led by our Learning Services Team, our Student Success Team, and I don't want to miss anybody, did I miss anybody? Assessment Team, yes, sorry about that. And that was really valuable work for my teachers and our entire team. It really helped us ground and all get on the same page about what's important and what are our priorities here at Lincoln. To that end, some of that work we started doing back in January, actually, and truthfully, it's been ongoing for the last several years. But we were fortunate because we were a title school that we had some extra funds this year to send some of our team to two different conferences. One was Conscious Discipline, which really focuses on adult behaviors to children's behaviors, responses to children's behaviors. And that's been huge for our team. It was a week-long conference. We sent four people to Las Vegas. That's a long time in Vegas if you haven't been there. Yeah, it was very hot in June. And then we had another team that was able to participate in the Unbound Ed Conference, which really looks at unpacking the standards through a lens of equity. That was a four-day conference in Denver and we were able to be joined with some of the other members of our Learning Services Team, as well as some other title school representation there. And it was really great to dig into the standards, looking through what a gleam protocol is what they refer to it as. So that kind of anchored our work as we were getting ready to work for this school year. So if you want to go to the next one, that would be great. So we landed on these two goals. My 5th graders, 4th graders, you're doing a great job. I know this is fun. At Lincoln, our goal for the next two years is really to, at least 80% of students identified as economically disadvantaged in grades 3 through 5 will show an increased sense of belonging as determined by the Panorama Culture and Climate Survey in the Teacher-Student Relationships Indicator. And then our academic goal, we were waiting for some recent data to come through, so this will tweak just a little bit, but not a lot. But it'll be aligned to the district one around implementing high-quality Tier 1 instructional framework in math, leading to a 20% improvement in student proficiency levels in math for K-5 students as measured by the iReady diagnostic in May. So those are kind of our focuses for this year. So to that work, here's what our 10s Week looked like with our adult-centered activities. We were definitely looking at the seven components of equity because when we're talking about making sure that everybody feels welcome, we want to ensure that our classrooms are welcoming and are responsive to each student in our building. And so that was a big look for us. We did norm on some of our consistent building-wide expectations, spots, halls, how we move in the hallway, how we eat lunch, those types of things. And then our continuous improvement team did a lot of the work on this. They led the modeling. They really focused in on helping teachers see the visual pieces of that. Ms. Robertson led a strong start in the morning, a soft start. Strong start, soft start. And then we really allowed time to build, right? That was the focus of this, is our teachers need the time to actually get the work done. So, next one. Here's kind of where we landed in the first four weeks of school. We're definitely working on our warm welcomes than our threshold greetings. We were already doing threshold greetings, but this just adds an extra layer. It's fun. I get to greet the students every morning with a beautiful tutu on, huh? It's a tutu that has a bunch of choices of how they want to greet me in the morning. So each kid gets to see at least two or three adults before they get to their class, depending on if they're upper pod, and usually more than that. And we know everybody's names, we know all of our students here. The next thing we had was our class contracts, which was that, and the next, those were the next two pages. So if you want to go to the next one, Laura Lee. Nope, it's kind of lagging there. Our classrooms were asked to work with their students to create their class contracts. They are co-created and on most of these, they have little signatures. You just can't see them because they're in pencils. Our kindergarteners are still working on their signatures, so, and theirs is ever-evolving. And then if you go to the next page, we were really wanting to make sure that that pulled through even to our specials classroom. And so our specials teachers created building-wide, co-created contracts so that in music, or PE, or in art, they're all working towards goals that they helped create and norms and rules that they helped create in their classrooms. And we're really able to anchor to that. That has been a very quick, brief overview of how we launched the year, but if you want to go to the next page. We really want to, this is where we focus, right? Our goal is to really focus in on our work and not spread ourselves so thin that we're not doing anything well. So you've read the book Atomic Habits, which is a great book. This is a quote from that book. Focus is how you knit the hours of the day together. With focus, the day becomes a beautiful tapestry. Without focus, you end up holding a bundle of loose strings. And we're fortunate because we can't afford to waste time trying to bundle up strings that we lost because we have too many precious kids here that we need to take care of. So we thank you guys for your continued support. We are so happy you are here to join us tonight. And thank you families for bringing your kids for a very short presentation. But thank you, and we just love being a part of this community and we are so blessed to have these amazing children in our school. So, thank you.
I think she's saying, "Don't leave him here." Don't forget you brought him, right? Yay, yeah, nice. That was fun. Hey, guys, if you want to move in, I think there's more space now. All right. We'll begin our discussion items. We'll kind of run it like we did last year. In the fact that we'll take a topic and then presentation and then we'll, questions around. Our first item on our agenda is 4.1, is the Buckingham and Southside Water Share Sale Contract.
Good evening, Madam President, Madam Education, Dr. Schaefer, I'm right here. Todd McConney, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Tonight for discussion is an agreement for sale and purchase of water shares. A little background, in 2022, the district disconnected the raw water connection to Wal Clark in Lakeview City due to some major infrastructure issues that were under these streets and, yeah, it was pretty significant infrastructure issues. Also, there was a challenge with the water rights, actually getting them to the site. So we made the decision to cut those off and then go with city water for Wal Clark. In doing that, back in 22, April 6, 22, the board declared 3.5 shares of Buckingham and 2.5 shares of Southside as surplus. So since that time, it's been on the market, so listed with our water agent. And for discussion is the contract you see to actually sell these water shares to the buyer listed there. So if there is any questions, we have a contract in hand for $230,000. That'll be basically payable upon closing of this contract. So I'll open up for questions as it'll be for approval in the coming board meeting.
Okay, let's start with Nancy. We'll start over there.
I really don't have, I mean, this is, this is not anything the same like what was going on with the Berthold Water Rights. This is just plain, simple, we had extra, lots of dollars.
Correct. When we cut it off, we had extra city in the ponds and, yeah, we were selling it, yeah.
Alexandra, any questions?
I don't think so.
Dawn? Amy? No. Denise?
No.
Stu?
Nope.
Me neither. Good to go. Okay.
I think I've eaten my time.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, the next one is 4.2. It's City of Loveland Intergovernmental Agreement, the IGA Energy Assistance Program. Start with Todd and Chris.
Yes, thank you again, Madam President. I am going to turn this over to Chris Matigi, our Director of Operations, to walk you through this agreement.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Schaefer, Chris Matigi, Director of Operations. Excited to be here tonight just to talk about a grant opportunity that we have through the City of Loveland. So we have taken advantage of this grant for a few years now with our new energy resource manager, Melissa Carroll. She has really pursued lots of opportunities. We've worked very closely with the City of Loveland in order to really utilize these dollars and get them into the schools. So this is a Energy Efficiency Assistance Program. So there's $10,000 available each year through the City of Loveland Water and Power Department. In the past, they've required an intergovernmental agreement to be done each year. So we've spoken with them about extending that term. So this would extend it for 10 years, so the first year and then nine successive. So we can continue to apply for those grants and not have to come to the board for that approval to, you know, sign that agreement. So it's a great opportunity for our students. We've utilized those for, you know, take-home conservation kits, energy audit tools, field trips to water treatment plants. Melissa's worked very closely with our 7th graders to get them out and experiencing those. So it's really been a great opportunity and this is pretty straightforward, intergovernmental agreement.
Okay. Questions? Alexandra, do you want to start for us, if you have any?
No, I don't think I do. I mean, I think I'm seeing it right here. So we, we, basically, so this says that we authorize you to apply for it. It doesn't mean that we are in an agreement that we get it from the city right here, correct?
Correct. We, yep. We still need to apply for it, just then means that we can accept the funds if they choose to allocate them to us.
Okay.
Dawn? Amy?
No.
Thanks. Do a lot of other, a lot of other organizations apply for the same grant, or is this just basically?
It don't seem to. The city has really worked with us in trying to figure out, it has been offered to teachers in the past. It's kind of cumbersome for our teachers to be reaching out for grants. So that's why Melissa's really taken charge of that and found opportunities, worked with schools, so that we can leverage those dollars and really get that great classroom experience. So it's available to others. This is just a way that we can really get the experience.
Nancy?
Is, is this, well, you may not know this, does the city fund this with other grants they're getting every year, or?
I'm not sure what their funding source is for the grant, but.
Okay, any further questions? All right, thank you.
I mean, I was quick. I don't think I'd be your time, but.
But we tried, right? All right, 4.3 is the Federal Grants and Head Start Policy Manual Update. Gordon.
Nope. If we can just keep that pace going, it would be great. I'll try not to diffuse that momentum. Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, Members of the Board, Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the District. This item that is brought before you for discussion tonight is a byproduct of the review process that we have undergone over the last year for the Head Start Program. And really from a federal grants standpoint, as you'll see in this item and the next agenda item. In order to participate in the Head Start Program, the Head Start Group would, requires a policy manual to be in place. So while I'm presenting solo tonight, this is certainly the work of our Early Childhood Department, Lam Carroll especially. But in his absence, I said I could certainly take this because I've been involved in that review process as well. So this document, this policy has already been reviewed by the Early Childhood Council and approved, I believe. So it's brought before the Board tonight just for consideration and review and will be brought forth in two weeks at the business meeting for potential approval. I will say that this is still a draft. There's still a few items that are being adjusted. But the general tone and tenor and content should be essentially what you see here.
Questions? Dawn? Amy?
No, no, you know, I'm the high representative, and so this is, you know, I know that Lam and his team and you, you know, have worked extensively on this, so yeah, no questions, thank you.
Denise, none for me.
No, for me.
So, thank you.
There was one thing I was going to.
Oh, Nancy, I'm sorry, yes. Why do I do this every time we get around the corner and, Nancy?
That's okay, I'm good.
And Alexandra?
So I do have a question. How is this different? Didn't we, wasn't there some Head Start manual we did that was created a couple of months ago?
I think that was mostly the rules and regulations for Head Start, where this is all.
Yeah, that was also like new, but also I felt like had to do with, so how is this, how is this different from this?
This, I can't speak specifically, I don't think, to that particular question. I think this may be a more robust version. This may have more of a financial tone to it as well. Because one of the other things that I neglected to mention is during our audit, the audit that we're undergoing right now that's required, the annual independent audit. One of the federal programs that they have selected for audit this year is the Head Start Program. And they requested that in order to be in compliance with the federal guidelines as well, that this document be prepared. So it has a bit more of a financial slant than maybe an operational slant to the early childhood program. This is Head Start specific, not just early childhood in general.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. And the next one, I think you're all, you're there for as well. This is 4.4, and this is the Thompson School District Accounting Policies and Procedures and Federal Grants Fiscal Policy Manual Update.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, very much in line with the previous agenda item. This has been something identified during the single audit, which is the federal programs audit of our auditors this year. Actually, the Head Start Manual refers to both of these manuals. So it's, it would be beneficial if we had all three actually approved at the next meeting. But the intent behind these, again, is from a financial perspective. Federal grant requirements call for a financial policy and procedures manual from a federal grant standpoint. And then we have a separate document that we've been working on, independent of this, and actually for the last year or so, from just financial policies and procedures that has been distributed in a draft form out to staff about such mundane things as how do you submit mileage reimbursement? Or what is the CDE chart of accounts formatting? What does each part of the general ledger key mean? Just a document primarily for secretaries and bookkeepers, I would say, but others throughout the district that have a reference manual available at their fingertips, as well as contact information for all of the business services team and the different areas that each person oversees or works in from a financial perspective. So it's just another step in having another tool in the toolkit, if you will, that we can use from an onboarding standpoint. If we have new secretaries or bookkeepers, or somebody in business services, or somebody in any of the departments that we have, to hand them the manual. And it's not hand them the manual and say, "Good luck." It's, here is your starting point, is a good reference point. We are always available to answer questions, but here's a document that's available to you as a good introduction, at least from a financial policies and procedures standpoint.
Amy?
I do have a question this time. The Accounting Policies and Procedures Finance Manual and the Federal Grants Fiscal Policy Manual, are these new documents, or are they updated or revised?
Yes.
All right, we can move on to the next question then.
I was gonna ask the same question, so, let's see if he has a further clarification on that.
The Federal Grants Fiscal Policy Manual is a new document. The Financial Policies and Procedures, in a variety of different forms, has been in existence for an untold number of years. Maybe neglected over those years, likely neglected over those years. So this is an effort to bring forth an updated document forward for the Board's consideration of approval that can be used then throughout the district. So kind of a blend of all those things, new, and then dusting off and updating something that has been in place before.
All right, so the Federal Grants Fiscal Manual is a new one, and it was created for what reason?
Again, with the advice of our auditors to have a federal, to participate in federal grants. Head Start is certainly not the only federal grant. We can talk about title programs, nutrition services, a variety of federal programs. There's some unique items, if you elect to participate in a federal program, that you have to follow from a procurement standpoint, a reporting standpoint. Some of those things that are different a bit than our normal financial policies and procedures for the bulk of the other financial transactions within the district. So that's the, while you'll see some redundancy in these policies, that's to be expected because we take whatever we can and duplicate in both policies. But then those unique items, primarily in the procurement area, I would say, to make sure that we're in compliance with those items.
Do other districts have manuals similar to these two?
They do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Was the Head Start one that was made totally from scratch? Or did you have something to start with on that one that built in these two?
I believe Lam and his team had a, at least a template of some startings for that. But this has been an iterative process over the last year, year and a half. We volunteered for a voluntary review from Head Start about a year and a half ago. And we took some of their findings, recommendations. And really, it's for our benefit as well to have a document that we can refer back to because as strange as it may sound, during the Head Start review that we volunteered for, we had a team that came out and did that review. But then we talked to others within the local statewide Head Start Program that we work with on a daily basis and got conflicting answers on the same question. So trying to have a document that says, "This is the Thompson way that we're going to handle this, and we believe it's in compliance with the federal guidelines," was. and we believe it's in compliance with the federal guidelines," was one of the reasons to do that. But I think, back to your original question, I think the Head Start manual had some, had, was in some form or fashion and probably embedded in the overall operational manual of Head Start. Now they are called out separately.
Okay, thanks, Nancy.
It seems like this is something familiar that we had gone through at another study session a couple of years ago. So I can't remember.
It was, that's what I was, that was the question I asked, that's what I was just figuring out. That in April of this year, on April third, was the Head Start Fiscal Policies update? But we, but there wasn't a manual for that yet. But there was, oh no, there was, there was, that was the federal programs, the Federal Grants Fiscal Policy was presented to us on April third and then we voted on it on April seventeenth. But the specific Head Start one and the like other, the accounting policies and procedures ones, we haven't seen before.
Right, I think there was, I think there was talk that this was coming, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the one we, the one we have seen and have voted on, and has that changed or is that the same?
There could be adjustments that have been made to that as a result of the work that we've been doing with the review and, and the voluntary review that we did with Head Start was then followed by the official review. We've had the results of that, there are several findings, we're getting ready for the, the final review of that to make sure that we've corrected those deficiencies before, we have that coming up in October. And that is a definite, one of the deficiencies we had was this document approved by the, the family council and the Board of Education. That was one of the deficiencies that we had. So we actually had that meeting, the, the review, final review meeting scheduled sooner than this, but to be able to present to the board in, in a draft form here and then have board adoption at the next meeting, we were able to bump out that, that date for the final review. And this should check that box and eliminate that, that finding that we had.
Okay. Dawn? Any other questions from anybody? Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Before you go, I have one question, then we move on to our next little thing because it's our four point five standard action consent items. And is that the reason why the contracts that are greater than fifty thousand so extensive? Is that because of the summer work that was done?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I don't know why you can't read my mind and figure this out. Under our four point five, Gordon.
Mm-hmm.
It lists our, or the contracts that are greater than fifty thousand and it's way longer than normal.
Uh, thank you. That's the clarification I needed.
Okay.
Yes, that is, if you look back to last month's agenda and this month and likely the next of the October, it would, it typically is longer and over the course of the year, that will get shorter and shorter.
Okay.
A fair amount of these purchases, again, all allowed for in the budget, the budget has been adopted by the board. So I call this the belt and suspenders approach. So by statute, we have to, the expenditures have to be appropriated by the board or approved by the board. That really took, takes place with the resolution of budget adoption that is already taking place. This is just to add more transparency and more information as those contracts then for what was budgeted come through the system. And a lot of these are blanket contracts that cover the whole year. So we have, we see a plethora of items that, that populate this list early in the year, the first quarter of the year especially. And they should get typically less and less as we go through the year.
I assume so, and the, the different transportation pieces that were listed as well as the alternative schools that some of our kids go to?
Correct, so, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. That's all, I just, I just wanted to verify that. Also on that list, guys, is donations and that wasn't on the original that we got, just so you're aware. So I will need somebody to read donations at our next meeting, so just, I'll send something out about that. All right, thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
And then Stu, it's your turn, we're gonna work on our CASB platform.
Yes, but before we do that.
Do you want brownies and cookies first?
Oh, sure.
All right. I don't know, if there's some napkins to go anywhere, oh, they're all individually wrapped too.
They're not gonna happen?
I'll wait till it goes around.
Is this all in honor of my report? Thanks to all of you that did that.
Cause you're gonna keep it short, right?
Thinking Nancy, then maybe I'll eat while I'm doing it and I won't talk as much. That never works. All right, before we start talking about the legislative platform, just shortly before I left for the meeting, I got the draft of the resolutions that are going to be introduced at the CASB Legislative Relations Committee meeting in October and then ultimately will be brought to the CASB convention in December. And there were two or three that I thought were, were quite interesting. These are resolutions that are going to be raised by particular school districts around Colorado. Something I didn't know is that Colorado has the lowest or the smallest number of days in the country for, for a minimum school year requirement in the country. We have a hundred and sixty days required. Anybody want to take a guess at to what state has the most number, the highest number? The answer is Kansas. Kansas has a hundred and eighty-five days required, we have a hundred and sixty. This school district, and this, we already know this is gonna be supported, supported by CASB, is to increase the minimum number of days required. A school district is also going to introduce the idea of including GED toward graduation rates. At this point, that isn't included and a school district is gonna be proposing that. The last one that I'll, that I'll mention is another school district is gonna propose for the first time ever, full funding of IDEA, which is Individuals with Disabilities Act. So I just thought I would tell you that initial work is taking place in regard to resolutions and some of these likely will result in bills that will be introduced into the legislature. So that's kind of the preview. You all received a copy of the completed first draft of the legislative platform. Should I give you a couple of minutes to look at the parts that you hadn't seen before? Or did everybody have a chance to do that? No? So let me give you a couple of minutes of what you're looking at in particular. I asked Laura Lee to, to prepare a hard copy of this as well. So the legislative priorities for Thompson Schools is new, you haven't seen this, this is basically the introduction. Local governance is new, you haven't seen this. And then there are four bullet points that you also have not seen. If you will look at the page which is headed Behavior and Discipline, the last three bullets there were not ones that you had seen before. We felt, we being Dawn and I, when we were working to finish this, that this was an area where there were only two bullet points under Behavior and Discipline, such an important part of schools, that we felt we needed to do some searching and find some additional information to include there. So you haven't seen those three. And you also have not seen the fifth bullet under Student and Staff Mental Health. And again, that's a point that was not covered elsewhere in regard to the bullets in that issue. So I will be quiet now and give you a chance to look at those six parts of the platform. When I was teaching and gave the kids time to read in class, usually when I said, "Look up when you're finished" and then we'll, we'll know we can move on. Should we do that to Dr. Schaefer?
Or when their head went down and they started sleeping.
And again, you've seen all of this before except those four particular parts. Oh pardon me, six. Six particulars. All right, I believe everybody is look, looking up at this point. Any questions? About anything that, that you see, Amy?
I wanna thank, you know, you and Dawn for working so hard at compiling this and-
You're welcome.
Thank you, both. I just have a question and I don't know if we know the answer to this right now, but throughout the document, there's EC twelve. I just wonder where does, do our other programs such as Community Connections fit in to? I mean, do we have, I mean, I would like it to be a little more inclusive, but I'm not sure if there's, you know, if there's better wording to, like for all, like-
In none of the samples that, that we referred to, did anything go beyond twelve. I'm, I'm honoring what you're saying, though that's, you're raising a point that we hadn't thought of before. So I'd appreciate some feedback from someone as to, should we stop at twelve? Or should there be in this, in our legislative platform, what is the next level and what would we call it?
I would say traditionally, the school districts would, you know, denote EC twelve to be inclusive. And that being said, I have seen EC twenty-one. Certainly as we think about our Community Connections programs and extended, you know, programs, it, you know, technically would be EC twenty-one, but I, it's less typical.
All right. So when you work with items like this in case?
I've never seen it as EC twenty-one or a day color.
All right, that was where I was going with the question.
So how, how do, how do others, I mean, is it just assumed that everyone is included, I think?
Traditional, again, as we look at it the most traditional sense, we educate students EC twelve. We have programs beyond the twelfth grade. And again, one could say that EC twelve doesn't denote age, it just is a progression of, like a linear progression of grade level accomplishment. And I'm not sure Community Connections, this does, it's a program I know, but it's not designated beyond twelfth grade, right? We wouldn't, um-
It's an age, it's up to twenty-one.
Right.
So it's-
Is someone on this side of there, I see you looking over at someone, is someone over here able, able to contribute some information to what we're talking about?
So I guess I'd wonder too about our fifth year students, if that encompasses them, then as well, technically?
They're still matriculating to achieve twelfth grade, so it might take them five years, but it's still twelfth grade.
Okay, okay. All right.
I mean, that's sort of what my offhand guess was when, when they first asked, it's like EC twelve feels like it's the umbrella term. In fact, actually what we saw in all the other was K twelve, um, which didn't feel right.
Yeah, nobody, nobody else used EC twelve.
Typically, PK twenty-one would be like if you were to include like post-secondary university, then, then I would see it as a PK twelve or EC twenty, twenty-one.
I guess if, if EC twelve is not excluding anyone, then I don't have an issue with it.
Would you say that's correct?
I, that's how I would interpret it.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Amy? With that explanation?
I understand the, the explanation, I mean, but I don't, I mean, I just, that just jumps out at me that EC twelve, I mean, like where are other students?
So again, we're talking funding at the state level is for EC twelve.
Right.
Funding wouldn't be for Community Connections per se. We use our budget for that, but typically when the Colorado, Colorado Legislature authorizes funding, it's for EC twelve, not EC twelve in all connected programs. Because that, this platform, it's a legislative platform, so.
But then how are we, isn't, aren't we supposed to provide education to people up to twenty-one?
We do, but that's part of, that would be special education funding or ESS funding. It was just federal.
All right. Are you okay with leaving it as it is?
I guess, yeah.
Okay. Regarding both of those first two sections, which are the longer ones, we pulled statements from samples. We also did some investigating online of what other states are using. And some of the information, some of the sentences that you see in those first two longer parts are original to our district. Particularly the second sentence in the legislative priorities, we felt that it was important, in addition to talking about funding and accountability, which we actually pulled from an Adams twelve document, that we made sure that in the introduction, in our legislative priorities, we included all six of the issues that the board identified and that's why the second sentence is there. Any other questions? Either about one of the first two longer ones or any of the four additional bullets? Nancy?
Overall, I like this, what, what I guess I'm, I don't know, concerned is the right word. But there seems to be a strong focus in here on the school system becoming a provider of mental health. And we are a provider of education. And so my, my, just my personal perspective is that the mental health is something that we need to be aware of, but I do not believe that that's part of our core reason that public education exists. We exist to make sure kids learn and flourish and are ready to go explore after they graduate, what career, what future, what path do they wanna go? I think there's other avenues that the mental health aspects can be dealt with.
But Nancy, they can't learn and flourish if they don't have a strong, I mean, if they don't have mental, have mental health that allows them to pursue those areas, to, to learn and flourish, they, if they aren't in a good- They if they aren't in a good place, they can't do all the others, so they're never gonna move forward if they can't.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that.
So I think it's a s- an essential part of being part of a s- a school district.
And that's fine, we all be different, that's fine.
I mean, I'm just
I guess, um, my question on that is, what of what's content in this section, um hmm, is is really the ones that we need to look at? Um
The board, let me inter interrupt for just a second, the board previously, um, accepted the first four bullets. So the only one that's new is the fifth one. So if there's concern about the fifth one, we certainly can talk about that, work on it more, whatever. It's the pleasure of the board.
And and just since, you know, I pulled this together, uh it was critical in this section to really hone in on the community supports access, which doesn't describe where, but just simply access. And incentives for paying professionals, because that is one of the biggest challenges that exists. And we're not saying that they need to be a specific type of professional, but when we talk about any role that might support student and staff mental health, one of the biggest challenges in filling those roles has been being able to be competitive, because we're school districts and not the private sector, we often can't.
And this is also consistent with a bill that was passed in the last legislative session dealing with competitive compensation for professionals.
Yeah, so I'm, I just wanted to give a little bit of of a background on why those were the ones that were chosen. It's, um, even though what you just raised as a concern wasn't something I knew, everything that was created addresses that in some way. And so I just wonder if there's
Thank you for raising that.
Yeah.
Any other comments either about the first two sections or the three bullets under behavior and discipline? As I said, when we actually sat down and looked at this, we thought that section was pretty light, considering how important behavior and discipline is in the function of the school district, and so those three were added.
What struck me kinda looking back at it after having some time is that we had support statements, but not action statements. Every other statement, every other section had both, and that's part of why we filled out the way that we did.
That's a good point, too.
Right, otherwise we're not really advocating for anything, we're just saying, hey, great, thanks. Right?
I'm gonna let you mull any other comments that you might wanna make. And while you're mulling, you can listen to me as I tell you that if you are satisfied, if if this document is acceptable, the plan then is that at the September eighteenth board meeting, uh, we will vote to approve or adopt this. And I asked Dr. Schaefer exactly what that meant for something like this, this is not policy. So would you like to explain to the rest of the board what you told me today in regard to where this will sit and what its actual, um I won't say purpose, but where where it sits, where it can be found?
So, uh, in addition to it being chronicled as part of the official board business and minutes that that live and exist, we certainly can, um, create a space on the website on the Board of Education, um, link to, you know, show what this, uh, adopted legislative platform is. And that actually can also become like a living chronicle, so each year we can keep updating it, so individuals can see how that progresses. We can absolutely do a press release, um, to illuminate that for the community and and certainly allow the community to know what the aspects of the legislative platform are. We talked about, uh, sharing this with our legislators, and so, um, if the board formally approved and endorsed it, perhaps it could be forwarded to, um, our representatives as well as our senator. I know we're in a in election cycle, I don't believe our senator is is up for reelection, but I think our representatives, we have two that are currently up, so but we will
That's correct.
certainly forward it once once those decisions are made. So those are some examples of things that we can do to, um, to elevate and illuminate this document.
And we can talk about this in more detail, uh, at the next meeting. Assuming that the board votes to adopt or amend, we can briefly discuss what the next steps may be in terms of use of this, placement of this, et cetera. So, that's really all I have is a CASB report. Are we alright with this moving forward and are you comfortable with this being introduced in two weeks then for adoption? Okay.
Alexandra.
Alexandra, go ahead.
Just on the last page where it says, is this legislation responsive? The second bullet point where it says was comprehensive data should be were comprehensive data? Data is plural.
You are correct.
She is correct, remember she, we did admit it as part of
I know, I know.
She's no longer an honorary member, she's been duly sworn in.
I know.
Oh, you guys.
Dr. Schaefer and I invited Alexandra to join the grammar geek, and now you know that she really belongs with us, so thank you. Yes, you're correct, it should be, and that change has been duly made.
You did that just to see if she'd find it, right?
I wish I could say yes. Alright.
Funny, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, do, are we ready to keep going or do anybody need to get up and move around? We're good? Okay. Alright, we will move into our study, um, session discussion items, and the first one is six point one, which is parent, guardian, community, education, and engagement. And I have Melissa, but I know there's a group that comes along. Gruyves.
An entourage.
So if I could just, um, as as our team is getting situated here, the board, uh, hopefully will recall at your, um, at our retreat in August, there was, um, a list of topics that the board was interested in covering at upcoming working sessions. And this is one of them, uh, the topic was around parent, guardian, community, education, and engagement. And so, I certainly appreciate the Learning Services team, I gave them, what, seventeen minutes to get this, or no, they they, I gave them a little bit more time than that. But, um, we appreciate their diligence and and pulling this together, and I think you're gonna be impressed by the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Schneider, Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services. Uh, that was a great introduction to what I was about to say. Uh, this is a topic that you requested, that we're really excited to share with you some of the work that, uh, we have done in these three departments. So I'm gonna introduce to you our three presenters. Uh, what we do have for you, and Madam President, uh, should you wish to change the format, this is totally fine. We had places for questions in between the three topics, but if you would like to wait to the end, okay?
No, that's fine, I think it's better if we don't have to hold it till the very end, if we have questions over a topic, so, per by section is perfect.
Okay. Alright, we'll give that a try then. Uh, so, um, I have, uh, Dr. Jennifer Guppels, who is our Director of Student Success. I have Mr. Jesse T. Hatterina, who is our Director of Federal Programs. And I have Dr. Maria Gabrielle, who is our Director of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. Between the three of them, they will be presenting to you ways in which they have engaged the community, educated the community, and, um, as well as provided inclusive programming. So I'm gonna let them just go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. As you all know, connecting with our parents, guardians, community is of utmost importance. I'm not sure if you saw the Surgeon General's report that came out recently about how parents and guardians are struggling themselves with mental and behavioral health. Um, it just adds more fuel to the reasons why we need to connect with each other, with our parents, guardians, community members, because it takes the whole team to, um, make sure that our kids are successful. And that connects with many, many things in strike twenty twenty-five, which you see listed right there for you. So here in Student Success, we're gonna start with a few highlights from from Student Success, and then I'll hand it off to my wonderful colleagues. Obviously, we're connecting with parents, guardians, community members around social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health. Um, we believe that, uh, these partnerships are absolutely critical and, um, really need to be based in authentic connections with between students, schools, and, um, parents and guardians and community members to improve student outcomes. I'm gonna highlight five areas, Youth Mental Health Task Force, Sources of Strength, Mental Health Pop-Up Events, Safe Talk, and Tech Savvy Parenting Education. But that's only because I only have five minutes to talk to you, I can assure you, I have many other ideas and, um, things that have happened and are in the works, because this is very, very critical to the work of our team. Um, our Youth Mental Health Task Force, as you know, has been going on for several years, um, doing a lot of great work around connections with community members, parents, so on and so forth. We wanted to just share with you next steps, that we're gonna be streamlining that group to about fifteen to eighteen member representatives. We're gonna still make sure that that, um, represents those groups that we look to bring together, where we have, um, private providers, uh, community providers, county folks, um, parents, and especially youth, so that we can keep bridging those, um, those relationships and making sure that we all know what we're doing and we're not duplicating efforts, but we're also not leaving gaps. This new smaller group will also be focused on, we've committed to an annual youth-led youth mental health summit. So the group will continue those relationships, connections, information sharing, de-mystifying, all of that stuff. But we will be doing so to culminate in, uh, Youth Mental Health Summit, hopefully each year. That might be a little ambitious, maybe it's gonna be every other year, but that's our goal.
If I can just, um, just on that point, 'cause it's a it's a huge point of pride, uh, we've been invited, uh, to present at CASB, uh, this year on this very topic, as well as at AASA, which is a national, uh, we've we've been invited to be a part of a national panel to present this as well, so.
Our, um, mental health pop-up events, um, so this is an idea that came actually through some of our students to destigmatize mental health support. So we have a variety of team members who attend athletic events primarily. We're hoping to get to some other activities as well, but it's quite the lift to make this happen, so we've been focusing athletic events to get it rolling. So we did some of those last year, and we're gonna continue that. We always include our animal assisted interventions there, as well as, um, connections to community services for folks. And we think we might have pulled it off, that we're going to be at a crosstown rival football game to really just that outreach. We're really, uh, very pleased Kevin Clark is extremely supportive, so we'll we'll see if we pull that off. Um, I also wanted to mention, um, some parent, guardian, and community education that we offer. Safe Talk, uh, is a is a community partner that we bring in to do essentially kind of a mental health literacy. And we will continue to do that and offer that for free. Everyone we've offered has, um, filled up. So we, our goal is to offer one to two per semester, um, and that is funded by our School Health Professional Grant. The same team also provides QPR to school staff, so we make sure that that suicide prevention education continues. Tech Savvy Parenting, um, if you haven't gone to their website, it's very interesting. Uh, we got to, we saw this at a CDE, uh, um, conference a few years ago, and we were really impressed with their novel ideas about how to help parents and guardians be more tech savvy, as you can tell from the title, um, with their students. And so, um, we have been offering that to parents and guardians, but it's been a little hard to schedule it. So we, um, had some folks work to incorporate that into something that could be part of a, just a regular back-to-school night or some other event that elementary schools in particular are already offering. And so that's been developed, and we will continue to offer that. We've also incorporated it into some of the CAPS lessons, um, that we do with our K two and fourth graders. Um, I did also want to mention that, um, I was, I did not have the information ready for the slideshow, I just wanted to mention that our Behavioral Health Intervention Team, which is funded by the School Health Professional Grant, is also going to be partnering with Summit Stone to do parent education around, um, youth mental health, both, um, what that means if their their students are, um, needing that type of support, and how they can access support themselves and support their children. Um, and so we're gonna kind of do a buildup to having those, um, uh, specifically in the schools that are receiving some of this support, and then grow that into something that would be open to, um, any secondary, um, s- uh, parents that are interested in that second semester. So that's a project that's in the works. Um, so I just wanted to ask, um, this group, because you have, um, engagement communication with our community, um, of course, in your roles, and wondering what you would want us to consider for future activities, or any questions that you might have for me?
Um, do you have any questions? Questions or suggestions, you have one?
I do, I do have suggestions, and it sounds like I'm, uh, reverting back to my CASB report, but that's because I am, but for just a second.
Okay. Hmm.
So, uh, the board identified six issues that we felt were important, and we would hope that some legislation would actually result in these particular areas. And they are funding, accountability, and academic achievement, equity and inclusion, behavior and discipline, student and staff mental health, and attracting and retaining staff. Two or three of these you've addressed already. So I'm gonna suggest to you that you think about, if you think it's possible, doing something with accountability and student achievement, behavior and discipline, equity and inclusion. And whereas you've addressed student mental health, staff mental health. I think these are areas that are ripe for plucking and important for investigating, and perhaps you can come up with some activities that would be related to these four, and then you would also be supporting the district's new legislative platform.
Thank you.
I just wondered what the Tech Savvy website is, because I didn't see it.
I I think it's actually just called Tech Savvy Parenting, that I can, I can get that out to folks.
That's all it's called, okay. Well, yeah, I I think it might be helpful for different schools, especially, um, and is it all done through technology as well?
So, they have several presentations that basically you kind of purchase from them to learn from, and then we have worked with them to be able to incorporate that into our
Okay. Okay.
uh, materials that we can share.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah?
Um, kind of following up what Stu was saying. As far as parent engagement and community outreach, I would like to see more emphasis on the student achievement learning. Maybe there's parents who, um, they don't feel quite as comfortable with trying to help their students to learn how to do math or or reading, and I know that some of, um, the past presentations from teachers of, you know, like, I think it was from Winona, where they came up with these exercises that would go home and they really evolved, um, became a game. So I think there's a need for trying to figure out how to do outreach with parents while we're giving them tips on, you know, parenting and mental health, also like how to help their student, um, learn and achieve. 'Cause I think that's that's a critical key component of what makes somebody feel really good.
Thank you.
Alessandra?
Um, I just have a couple of questions about, you talked about the mental health, the task force, and that there'll be the youth involved in the youth-led summit. How are you, um, selecting, or how are they, you getting kids to be be involved in that, with that process?
Thank you for asking that question, um, because how we're doing that will be different this year. We had, um, some co- uh, county partners that were really instrumental in helping with us with that. And that leadership has changed over, and so we'll be working with new partners at the county, as well as my two colleagues here are very good at helping me find, um, students um, and other folks in our school district, so we make sure we have a representative group of students there. So the processes that we used, um, in the last two years will have to just change up a little bit, because some of our partners changing.
Um, and then my second question is that t- is the Tech Savvy Parenting, you s- talk about offering it in elementary schools, is that it like who it's geared for, or are there other options for older kids, or is it mostly just a elementary age program?
So it really struck us as, um, that we need to get this to parents and guardians early, that, um, it's not that it's not appropriate for our secondary students, but, um, we think that it's possible that our parents and guardians for elementary students may be unaware of some of the things that they may need to know to keep their kids safe. So we wanted to start there, work out some of the details, and then roll that up into upper grades.
Thank you.
Dawn?
So, my thought on this, as far as like additional things, I think have been really helpful. And I know you said that you you only could pack in five things, so if this is something you're already doing, awesome. But, um, I hear from people all the time about them seeing things from social media or newsletters for directly from the school, right? Like, I saw this 'cause you sent it to me, it's really helpful. And so if, um, if we can continue to push out as much just-in-time type things, like tips and tidbits and little videos, that kind of thing, I know that's really helpful, because like tips and tidbits and little videos, that kind of thing, I know that's really helpful because people tell me all the time that that's how they're finding out with their students, forget to tell them, me included.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Amy, anything?
Um, just a question about the Tech Savvy. Um are there just a thought about reaching out um for education to, and I don't know, is it still called the Grand Family Coalition?
Mm-hmm.
Um but, you know, sort of working with that population, um you know, I could very well be a grand family person right now and I'm like, that tech piece is challenging.
Mm-hmm.
You know, social media, um all of, I mean, and these kids are just whizzes with everything and so I, I don't know, I just um if the, if, is it still called Grand Family Coalition? Okay, um you know, just some more direct outreach. I think that's a unique um group um of folks who are um helping our, our youth right now. Um so that was my first question. Do I get to ask the key?
Okay, it's okay.
Um, I didn't know if we were running around.
Can I look at that?
I don't want to, wanna follow the news, cause I can. Um, second question, the uh pop-up event, can you just speak a little more? I know you said that the service animals, service dogs will be there, but um.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so um Shannon Jenkins, our wonderful mental health coordinator, um designed this along with some of our district social workers and some of our building mental health staff.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And so it's a kind of a tabling event and so they have the al- uh animal assisted um intervention is there with, with at least one dog. And then they have, you know, things on the table that are eye-catching, um but also connected to destigmatizing mental health support. So there might be, you know, squeezes right next to some flyers from community partners, um uh and then just a variety of ways for to kind of invite people to feel welcome to come over and talk and ask questions and leave with resources about accessing mental health support in our, in our community and in our schools.
And will that be set up in a spot that's accessible to both grownups and students?
Yes, that, that, um I would say that, that the spot, I'm laughing because it's been very interesting to try to determine the perfect spot.
Yeah.
We, we uh did very well when we were at the basketball games because as, as you know, if you've gone to them, there's a very narrow entry and so we can
Right.
they, they, it's easy for them to see us. Um the football games are a little more challenging, so we're still trying to work out the details of the best spot to do that.
Hmm. And the focus of those are for the, the grownups and the students, okay, or I'm sorry, guardians and parents?
The dogs help. It's, it's, it's for both, yes. Yeah. And in some cases, um there've been other community partners who have had a table alongside us, um so that they can address uh that broader span.
Oh, good. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Denise?
My goodness, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. Um, moving on to.
So state and federal programs.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Shaefer, members of the board. Um so this is a little bit really taken from our consolidated application. So our consolidated application really is the funding for our seven Title One schools. And one of the major improvement strategies that's connected to the funding is gonna be family school and community partnerships. So it really speaks to a little bit of some of the questions that you've been asking already. And with that, on the surface level, what we've been able to do with this year's consolidated application is increase FTE at Title One schools and have what we call an FSCEP community, of FSCEP specialist. Um just an assigned person that works with folks like Brandy and really begin to look at how do we partner with community to really bridge learning between school and life. Um and sometimes I'm reluctant to say home because as you know, in Title One schools, we have a hu- high number of highly mobile youth that in reality their home looks like just life, right? Cause they're always on the move and in transition. So thank you for that. This is just some of the stuff that we began to tap into last year around looking at highly mobile youth. This is an event that we had at PVA in the spring, but we also had one in the fall. Really it was a spring fleet family gathering. We were pro- community organizations, wraparound services that are already addressing the needs of highly mobile youth. One of the great things that happened that evening is that this family, his father with uh three sons, was able to get haircuts for all four of them and get shoes and get skateboards and get jackets. So knowing, right, knowing um how that might alleviate things prior to maybe winter break or as we prepare for the summer is a really good way to begin to lessen the anxiety and apprehension some of our single families have or double up families have across the district. This is something that took place as a result of some of our funding too. This is kindergarten kickstart that took place at Edmondson. So this is some other ways that we are using our supplemental cash with Title One to really begin to support and engage and partner with youth early on in, in their schooling. This is also a partnership that we recently began to uh really strengthen with Sunrise. So we did a community wellness day, held a booth there, engaged with multiple community organizations, we were able to give information, backpacks, school materials, raffle off skateboards and other modes of transportation. As we know, sometimes that two-mile radius, that's a walking distance gets long, right? So it's really nice to have the ability to also make sure that our children getting there with fun ways and learning tricks along the way. I'm a skateboarder, so we've gotta talk about tricks. And this is an event that's coming up pretty soon. This is our multilingual family pizza in the park. Last year we had around two hundred, is it two hundred and twenty-five people show up? It's a great opportunity for just community, teachers, educators, FSCEP specialists, patrons to begin to engage with a demographic that's gonna continue to increase in Loveland. You know, as, as time goes on, we'll see an increase of diversity and folks from diverse backgrounds. This is a great event that's gonna be taking place here this month. It's scheduled for September eighteenth. Um we've partnered with Crossroads Trift as a facility to hopefully get around two hundred people there, right? And we're gonna have a McFarlane USA. If you've not all seen that movie, it's a great movie about runners from California. And we have a special guest who is Thomas Vias, who is the runner that the movie is based on. So he'll do an open house. Pepsi's donated the soft drinks, the sodas and the waters. There'll be more than sodas and waters. Um we've got pizza, we're partnering with Cinemark around popcorn, so we're hoping for a great open house. There'll be some community organization booths, a Q and A afterwards, but really a good time with seven Title One schools. Bill Reed and Lucille Irwin and also the information has been sent to all of our middle school cross-country and high school teams. And the reason it's more exclusive to those folks is that there's supplemental dollars that are connected to stakeholder engagement for those schools as identified and designated by designation by the state and federal um departments of education. So we're super excited about that. And this is what's coming up for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, right? As I said, it's been the rewrite of the Title One Consolidated Application. And some of those highlighted areas really speak to some of the efforts that we're gonna do systemically, like our goal is within the next couple of years is to have a high-impact strategic plan for the whole district, not only for Title One schools. So what does that look like to begin to build capacity? Title One schools are already investing in space with their FSCEP specialists to have really many families that are within their schools that'll have food, groceries, clothing, access to maybe printing, um clothing services, other essentials, basic needs. And FC coffee chat chats is essentially some of the professional development our folks are gonna be getting um as they begin to build the capacity and define the roles. Community asset mapping, we're gonna be looking at what is already existing within a couple of mile radius of the schools that one can be further accessed and connected to the schools and their families. Collective cafes is essentially bringing in community organizations with principles to where, you know, sometimes we hear community organizations say, well, I really wanna support a school. Well, we're gonna have them present, we're gonna invite principals and, you know, put your money where your mouth is, right, kinda thing? Sign up and support us, right? Um kinda put them on the spot. Title One Cookbook, you know, some really multicultural stuff, cause I always think about community partnerships, especially when we're looking at students and families that maybe other than um what has been typical in Thompson School District as the demographics begin to change. You know, so when I think about um community, what was I just talking about? It's really honoring, you know, some traditions that they would like to maintain when access to maybe ingredients are not present in the community that doesn't really have stores that provide that, right? So we have the ability to access those types, go those types of things as well. Um Title One Professional Learning Conference, this is gonna be for our Title One schools. That'll take place next year. But some of the core strategies that they're gonna be building capacity on is gonna be around partnering. And I know I'm running out of time, but what I really wanna talk about is empathy interviews. So right now we've enlisted our FSCEP specialists to begin to really engage our parents, our teachers with students, our community with three particular questions. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. That our learner's school and districts, when I think about FSCEP, I think about three different tiers of really how is the partnering existing between the learner and the teacher, the school and the family, the district school and the community, right? So they're gonna be asking three distinct questions that you'll find right here that include, you know, what is most important to you about your student's child's education? What does a positive school and family relationship look like? How should the district partner with the families and community? And I'll speak super fast. These are three responses that we've recently gotten already in the first three weeks of school. Around thirty folks from across seven schools have already been asked these questions. We're gonna continue and do this throughout the year and really quarterly assess themes that are emerging. So these are just, you know, high-impact strategies that really go beyond um a typical conversation that can take place at a parent-teacher conference. And now I'm ready for some questions and some recommendations.
Okay, Stu, you're first on this one.
Um, not really a, a question. I thought the activities that you showed us on the slides were really fine activities. I, I do have one question about kindergarten kickstart. Did that only occur at Edmondson? Or was that the, kind of the uh, the center for the whole district to come for kindergarten?
Well, I would say really it's, it's, it's essential to Edmondson. I would say that other schools can't partake, but that's what's great about Title One's supplemental funding is that according to what the school finds to be an emergent need, which I think it's a great opportunity um to replicate at other schools, to acclimate students into the community.
I mean, I thought the idea of the empathy interviews is a great idea.
Yeah, it's, it's an ama- you know, we, we often think to ourselves that we know a community.
Yeah.
However, if we ask a distinct question to a spectrum of folks, um we really begin to find the commonalities and things that we're not really truly understanding without intentionality of questioning.
Right, thank you.
Um. I, I think that the samples that you've shared with us need to be shared with everybody, all the schools, so that they know that's an example of what you could consider doing for kindergarten or for anything that you're doing. I think that those empathy questions might be kind of fun to do
Mm-hmm.
to kindergarten teach parents as they're starting on their journey. And what are, what is your best hope? And or, yeah, what, what do you hope happens during this year? And follow up with, did it, I mean, do you still have that feeling that having the best hope for my child, do you still feel like, or was it met?
What a great idea to follow up with those same folks towards the end of the year and see where they're going, especially if they're going through a transition year, right?
Right. Yeah, exactly, especially the ones that have struggled and have trouble landing anywhere.
And what's great about the empathy interviews is that they're depending on the situation, right? So like, I know that October and February are high-discipline months, you know, typically through the education of a child. So, or even like absenteeism situations, right? So I look at it in the context too, is that if a school um is experiencing some struggles with maybe absenteeism, what a great opportunity to think about two distinct questions around attendance and what are the struggles that are happening as barriers to get to school? And if you ask a number of teachers, of parents, you'll find that maybe there's some commonality. So they don't always have to be these particular questions. It could be dependent on maybe a situation that's emerging that you wanna get some information from your community on how to share their voice, but also inform the decisions we're making, right?
Okay, thanks. Nancy?
Um, I know that um Monroe did kickstart and that it, it worked really well and was really popular. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm glad to see it still. And I think it should be, if at all possible, fit through all of the schools, cause I think it's a great program. On the um, I'm curious, two things. One, what tends to be like the, the age or the grades that you tend to focus more on, or is it more even? And then, what, what are the ways you work to find out from the parents' communities themselves? What do, what are they looking for versus kind of a district-led? How do you um go about seeing to get it to be community-led of this is what we would like and want? There's a, I, I mean, everything that you say up here is great, but I'm just looking for that, how, what are you doing to see if you can flip that? So that it's more, it's more driven, community-led, or at least a little more equal?
Well, I think, you know, these are the steps to get there, right? So this leads to that effort around really one, building trust with community. Um looking at what is being said and hopefully really resembling that in the activities that are in the future based on those schools. And when I think about specifically the schools that I support, they tend to be Title One schools because that's where the funding is at. And ultimately, of course, district-wide, the effort would be to have these types of activities exist within all our schools. We would have to get into some funding conversations when it comes to that piece. So when it comes to the community that I'm supporting the most would be um PVA, which is of course an EC through, through eight, and then of course the other six Title One schools are elementary, so they're gonna be to five. But this is really the beginning of step one. To go more specific around a particular practice that's going to take place in the spring, it's gonna be essentially what's called a principal chat, where we're gonna bring in stakeholders for a couple of hours at a particular school, really engage community and really look as a, as a, as a price for opportunity to create a co-facilitated activity where everybody that is informing that decision takes part and is enlisted with the reg- leadership responsibility of that particular activity. So those are kinds of the models that begin to be able to be replicable at other schools.
So if I understood you correctly, what you do, you tend to focus more on like the Title One because that's where the funding is.
The state and federal funding.
And so that tends to be the elementary. So as a board, there's something we might wanna discuss or consider of how do we, how do we make priority or prioritize making sure that the family-community partnership strategy is funded so it can help, it can go to, you know, be part of all the schools versus more, you know, you're just trying, you're trying to do as much as you can with the Title One funding, but as a board, maybe we should try, we could try to figure out how to make a priority. How do we get that so we can fund that program throughout the whole district? Cause family-community partnership isn't important just to Title One, it's important to everybody.
Exactly. And, you know, when I think about community asset mapping, um and community, community mining, you know, in Arizona, they do something called School Connect where they've really created a system to begin to engage um community partners, specifically churches. And I know that there's a situation when it comes to um having the ability to partner with a religious entity. We run into that with federal programs as well because there are some stipulations. However, um some of the partnerships that are being created among schools and churches can be very replicable among, you know, spa- other sponsors. For instance, my wife, um we have kids that go to Greeley West High School. Recently, she partnered with Bank of Colorado to begin to support the soccer pro- program at, at Greeley West High School. So there are abilities for schools that are not titled to begin to really look at that. However, it's again, how do we build the capacity of our administrators to really know what the steps are to begin to gain those sponsors? One of them being that collective cafe, right? Is really having them be introduced to each other, uh look at particular projects that fit that particular organization and begin to create a, a co-facilitated, co-generated plan.
Okay, thank you.
Alexandra, anything?
No, thank you. Um, so I, tweaking what Barb said because I just liked it and I thought I wanna add to it. Um, I love the idea of doing the empathy questions in the transition years, right? Cause those are the places where we know we're having challenges, they, you know, that would really be so helpful to be connecting. Um and so if we can pass that along to at least get those interviews at like fifth and sixth and eighth and ninth, that would be, I think, really helpful. And then um, I think being able to, to share these things as a toolkit for the schools that have the funding to be discretionary is awesome because these are great ideas, right? And like, if I've got the budget, I just need a good idea to go with it. And there are some really great things that are happening here, so um we're, you know, that, it might be a way to sort of balance that out because I think there is a lot really good here. I especially love the skateboard giveaway and all those things that happened at the resource night. I mean, I think, I think about our s- our communities that maybe don't have financial constraints, but every family has time constraints, um or I didn't know that existed, or I didn't know that my kids are gonna like it. And so that, that, there's value in building that community that way as well. That also has the ripple effect for the greater good of our Title One schools also get to meet those resources. So even if it's just pushing this out, there's some really great things here that I know would be so nice for all families.
Right. No, I appreciate that. You know, I'm working really. You know, I'm working really close with Kevin Clark, the director of athletics. You know, and I discovered that athletic directors and coaches are already in front of families. So bring some intentionality to the questions that they're asking. So they'll be trained in, in this area as well. And speaking about the skateboard before, I handed over to Dr. Maria Gabriel. Um, we're having a really cool thing for foster youth. Studies have told us that, you know, skateboarding and foster really is therapeutic. So we're going to partner with Launch Community, which is in Fort Collins, and take about ten to fifteen foster youth with an adult who's had an impact on their life and maybe influenced their skateboarding. So we're gonna go to launch and they're each gonna receive a, just a, a wooden plank that they're gonna be able to shape and design their own skateboard and they'll leave with their own skateboard, have some pizza, make some connections, and just really share that space. So yes, I dig that stuff as well, 'cause I get to get a skateboard too.
Okay. Amy?
Thank you very much.
Denise?
I do have a follow-up question.
Oh, you do, huh?
Barb, uh, and it's for Dr. Schaefer. The idea of moving some of these activities beyond the Title I schools would become a responsibility of someone, uh, not just the funding, but also the i, the idea creation, the administration of it, et cetera. I'd like you to begin thinking about this, if you haven't already, and maybe report back to us at some point with, uh, what we as a district might be able to do, that's reasonable, both in terms of cost and time and things like that, to expand this program as we could.
It rhymes with FTE. No, I, I, let me, uh, let me, uh, let me think about it.
I also am sharing it with some of the PT, not PT, whatever the, the parents, oops.
PTO.
DAK, no, no.
PTO.
Yeah, fundraisers, the people who have fundraising or, well, we're not. If we were to share some of these ideas with them, they might take one and just go with it if we just share it.
No, definitely, and that's the ultimate plan, right? Is to phase out, um, from schools that are prepared to be training a particular activity and just build upon that, you know? So one of the main goals, like I said, you know, every Title I, um, con app is in a three-year cycle. So, you know, ultimately, within the end of the next couple of years, what my hope is, is what we've recreated a, a district-wide, high-impact strategic plan that it really is a toolkit and a guidance to where they can seek family-centered support for staff capacity in their buildings and coaching, right?
Thank you. All right.
Awesome. Um, but it's hard to miss, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, and members of the board. Happy to be here with you again. I wanna just talk a little bit about, um, the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Department and our shared commitment to ensuring equity access and opportunity for each student in our system while recognizing, honoring, and respecting each student as a whole child. I also wanna just share on this slide that, um, the, the reason that we have put equity in front of the other words that usually you'll see DEI, but we have equity at the forefront because for us, it's about increasing student outcomes. It's students first. And that was based on the community input that we do, we gathered in twenty nineteen, that people said students first. And so, um, increasing student outcomes is our priority and that's why we start with equity in Thompson School District. Thanks, Lyman. Uh, when I met with you all on June fifth, I shared a bit about last fall, student surveying and listening sessions. And this is one picture from one of our high schools where we did this. And just as a reminder that, you know, meeting with three hundred and forty-five middle and high school students in this process, um, I just wanted to bring it up again and reiterate that, um, for us in TSD, equity's focus is students. And we talk about educational equity in TSD, it's about engaging in difficult conversations to first uncover barriers to student success. Second, to, so that we can work diligently to remove those barriers that we uncover. And third, that we increase each student's access and opportunity for success. Students' experiences and needs described in their own words is a gift to each of us, a gift to listen, to learn, and to respond in support and affirmation. Our students' voices led to a series of actions that are still creating momentum. Um, there were quick responses and long-term responses, such as, um, spring twenty twenty-four principal training, spring twenty twenty-four two-part school-specific training, um, fall twenty twenty-four training for district-wide continuous improvement teams in culturally responsive practices, and currently, the use and, and forming our district and schools' cultural and climate goals that are being written for this school year. When Hanover Research analyzed our student survey data, student listening sessions, and other student outcomes related to student achievement and behavior, they made three recommendations. First, to address bullying and harassment in schools. Second, to implement culturally responsive, sustaining curricular materials and instruction that include and value multiple expressions of diversity as assets for teaching and learning. Third, provide professional development on creating safe, welcoming, and equitable school environments. Thank you so much, thank you. And while that may not seem like a celebration for us, um, what I do think is exciting about it is that through our ongoing community engagement with county-wide agencies, I have learned that we are not alone in these needs. And that we have strong partners across the county that want to partner with us to solve these issues. And that's where I think the excitement comes for us. As you've heard my colleagues talk about the ways that we're partnering with our community, we're leveraging community resources. So, um, as you can see in this slide, there's a couple of different things that I wanna hone in on, um, that our county partners in the Health Department, United Way of Lemer County, Pooter School District, and our own staff, students, and families in TSD since twenty nineteen have uncovered similar needs related to the need for culturally responsive and affirming places and spacing, spaces of belonging. This is good news because we have opportunity to partner, to continue to partner, to strengthen the relationships, and also, for all of it's a good news when we can blend funding. So, the EDI department continues to partner with City of Love One Departments, Love One Heart and Soul, and a variety of other lo, local organizations and agencies to celebrate diversity throughout the year. This is an opportunity for us to create access and to support further learning and opportunity for us to have community celebrations of diversity in a community in which our young people are telling us they don't feel like they belong. That's the power of community coming together and creating safe spaces, safer and braver spaces for people who are, do not share the same cultural background, linguistic background, socioeconomic background, ability background, to be in community together, to, I think of almost like rubbing elbows, but that proximity to diversity is learning. And, and I think that's what I get so excited about in terms of thinking about how we grow an appreciation of diversity. That's an important part of developing global citizens, critical thinkers, and collaborators, collaborators, which are key elements of our portrait of a graduate. It's a first step in our individual journeys to move towards a more inclusive and supportive community. And we believe that students are the core of our community. So you notice there's some other, um, community education and engagement activities that Vince noted on the slide. Um, I wanna pull one out, which is, we're working a collaboration with CSU Extension this year to, um, engage, um, Latino families, um, with, um, gathering, um, experience and understanding about the college application process and what it takes to support their children to get into, um, college. And it's called Juntos, um, four H is the name of it, through CSU Extension. And then, the culminating class of the six-week class will be the family, the student and the family going on to CSU campus. So that's something I have never had the opportunity to do before. It's always been students on campus, I'm super excited about engaging families in that way. And then, the other one that I really wanted to highlight tonight is our excitement in offering the first annual high school student belonging conference, beginning with ninth, ninth graders to support their transition into high school and beyond. That is explicitly coming from the student voices that we heard last fall. So of all the different things that I mentioned, that we've done, trainings and supports and, and a, a lot of different things, this is explicitly our action for this year. Um, finally, I want to thank you for your continued support of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion in TSD. The work we have engaged in as a system is making strides. It's been a long five, six years, but you advocating, supporting, and affirming this work, we're seeing some systemic changes around equitable practices. Um, so I really want to, um, share some of the work that I know the Communications Department has put some things in place where they have systemic training, so each year having annual training for principals to be able to use multilingual communication tools so that we are furthering that expectation. We're not just legally bound, but we're saying, yes, this matters. And that was, um, when we engaged with the community in twenty-one to twenty-two, that was the lowest, kind of lowest hanging fruit. Our entire community said, yes, we believe multilingual communication should be our first priority area. So, um, I'm super happy to, to, to report that, I'm in communication with folks from the Operations Department even yesterday. Um, they said that they are finally have completed the installation of bilingual entry signs on all of our schools. And I see that outside of Lincoln when I came in here tonight, so those are beautiful. I got very excited when I was at Mountain View yesterday to see one and take a picture. Um, that didn't make it in here because that was last night. So, um, but also I just wanna commend you all as our board, um, that you have systemized inclusive family and community engagement on your own, um, really through putting those community forums in place, systematizing that, and including multilingual access in, in those opportunities. And, and so, next slide. Um, so really that's, I just wanted to invite you to, to engage in the questions that, based on your engagement and your constituents, your communication with our community, what should the EDI department consider for future activities and what, what questions do you have for me?
Um, I'm gonna pass over to Nancy.
Oh, I, I was curious on the, the first belonging conference, did you say it was ninth graders? Was that, i, is, has it already happened?
No, it's this month, September eighteenth.
Oh.
And it's ninth grade, we're starting with ninth graders.
Is it just at one school or like?
It's gonna be at Crossroads, um, we're gonna have the-
Oh, is that with the film, with the film?
We're gonna have the student conference that day and then in that night, we're bringing this, because we're bringing the same keynote speaker as an inspirational speaker, put the students there.
Oh.
And then they'll be invited to come back with their families that evening along with the Title I schools.
Okay, so it's kinda like a, okay, gotcha.
Two different events, but yes, it's similar.
It's different but same, so, okay, thank you.
I'm also curious about, like, what, what, how are the students chosen for that conference and what is sort of the topics or how is it, what's it gonna look like?
Yeah, great question. Uh, so students, we, again, thinking about the data and the students that we surveyed last fall, um, and the, the experiences that they shared with us around racism and misogyny, sexism, um, and slurs based on disability. We really wanted to connect around, um, specific student populations and also targeting all of our ninth-grade transition programs that happened because that, those groups were, um, really already trying to connect their students early this summer. So they were kind of our first place, our first starting point and then some of the other groups. Because, um, this is our first time doing it, uh, we're starting with ninth grade and we're starting with forty per comprehensive high school and then ten for our, um, for Ferguson, so.
And what's sort of, what are the sessions?
And then the talks, thank you. Yeah, so we're, we're gonna have a panel on, um, college access. So we've invited, um, a number of our different local community colleges, as well as four-year universities and programs that we already partner with, to come in and have like a panel presentation on, you know, kind of the what does it take and bring schwag and fun stuff and all that. And, um, and then I'll be doing, um, a session with youth around, um, how to, kind of self-care and response to when you hear a remark, you know, how do you manage it and how can you ask for support? Um, some of those types of things. And then we'll have the keynote, they'll be Thomas Vias. And, um, then we'll, I'm, I'm out of order here, but we'll be starting the day and ending the day using restorative practice of community-building circles. Um, because we really wanted to make sure that the students are, just because they're in a club, that they can also connect and reach out to other students in other clubs, um, who will be present. So, that's a couple of different ways to think about how that day is gonna go.
Cool, thank you.
Um, I, I guess I would just kinda fast-forward when this goes really well and we're doing more of them. Um, I think that, you know, the bigger the audience, the better, right? Because like, that's also an ageless thing that students need. And then, um, I've heard from a lot of people in, especially in the last couple of weeks, um, around all, the, uh, adults in our community also wanting that same education, right? Feeling like, I don't know how to support my student who's struggling with X, right? And so, um, I realize that, I'm fast-forwarding quite a bit, no pressure, but like, I can see where, um, there had, there is a need for adults who maybe didn't understand the language of today. And God knows I used a term that was popular like a year ago and was totally lame for trying to use something that was so old, um, let alone, right, like cultures we don't understand or haven't been exposed to, right? Like, that, there, there's definitely a generational piece to that. And families struggle with, I don't know how to be the best support for my kids just 'cause I don't understand what they're saying or what they need. So, as we keep growing this, that's, I think, a very real desire from the adults in our community.
Great, thank you for that.
Amy?
Um, my question is about the belonging conference, so, um, Alexandra had asked that. But I also think it's very, um, smart when you talked about, um, you know, everybody benefiting, um, from, you know, joining together with funding, you know, using different buckets of funding for the cause, but, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
What are the barriers to making things bigger? And, I mean, I know you're getting started with the conference, but, but how can we attempt to be inclusive and include as many kids as we can, um, versus the ones we get forward right now or whatever that barrier is?
Yeah, barriers for putting on events, student conferences, um, it becomes questions about cost. We are within the con, confines of, um, bussing schedules. So, whenever you send students on a field trip or this is like a field trip, we're bringing bussing students to a certain location. We're doing it as close to schools as we can in our own community instead of sending them out of town because, um, of our bus schedules and making sure that we fit in that. But it's also, you know, dollars to pay drivers and all the winter terror buses and, and those things. It's also pulling, you know, we need, we have a one to ten field trip ratio, so we need to pull adults out of buildings to be able to attend with their students. So, that's another thing, we have to be careful that we're not pulling too many folks. And so we're real strategic on getting people that don't need subs, et cetera. Um, we, you know, we'll be providing lunch, that's a cost. Um, keynote speakers' cost, um, you know, all the things. It's just, it's about funding and resources, yeah. So, starting fairly small, just to see how we do. And then thinking about, um, my, uh, new teacher on special assignment, Atossa, Andrew Dutch is here. And he has already been looking for grant funding for next year and has a lead already and is like ready to write the grant for next year because he's like, this is gonna go great and it's gonna get bigger. And so, we're, we're on it, but yes, thanks Denise.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing us this information. It was interesting and important, and speaking now to all three of you, and Melissa's the, the coordinator. And I'll be excited to hear where we go in the future in these different, uh, areas. Thank you.
I love that we started out our study sessions with one of our top items on our, um, retreat plans. So, thank you, all of you. It was great and just what we needed and gave us an opportunity to interact with you and not have to wait to the end because we kinda forget, what did she say and what did he say? So it helps, yeah, so thank you very much. Appreciate you guys, thank you. All right, um, let me see where we are. Six point two is potential budget reporting format discussion. Who am I turn this over to?
Um, we're gonna turn this over to Gordon, but he's going to, um, really co-present with Nancy.
Okay. Back again, huh?
Wherever, you can do some, there are next to whatever you want.
Back again.
You wanna sit with me?
I think, whatever you would prefer. We'll have the documents on the screen here, so. So we're plowing ahead, I assume here?
Oh, I guess I forgot to ask.
No.
Stretch break, anybody need to get up and move around, we've been sitting for almost two hours. And actually longer.
Yeah, five minutes.
Yeah, five minutes. Yeah, five minutes. That'd be good. Okay. Alrighty. I whistle, but, I'm sorry, extended my whistle. Oh, that's okay. You can stand. Okay.
Trying not to be in anyone's way when I do it.
All right, all right, we're turning it over to you.
Are you sure?
Yeah. She's over there. She's, yeah.
As we heard on the, um, on the, uh, the school presentation, um, tapestry or loose strings. Um, we'll see what, uh, this might be when we finish. But, uh, thank you, Madam President and Gordon. My intent here, um, is to provide just some, uh, background information on what we are. Um, compare, um, some of our documents with what other districts are doing. Um, talk about, um, the, uh, policy that's out there that pertains to this subject matter. And finally, um, a, an example of what a, a potential, um, budget advisory committee could look like. And then, uh, I about said counselor, I will say board member, uh, Renfeld will then, uh, be able to, uh, fill in the gaps on anything that I've left out. And then, um, we welcome any discussion, questions that the board may have. So, the primary topic, um, that we're talking about in this discussion item is, uh, the budget, um, reporting format. So the budget document, which is required by statute that we have to submit every year, and the information that's included there. So in the attachments that you'll see with the agenda item, there's a variety of different, uh, things and we'll touch on those, um, briefly. But, um, from a policy standpoint, current board policies that are in place are listed in the memo. Um, that is DB, which is the annual budget, DBC, which is budget planning, preparation and schedules, DBG, which is budget adoption, DBGE, which is the exhibit, which is budget adoption exhibit, and DBJ, budget transfers. Those are the policies that, uh, that Thompson School District has in place right now. And a lot of those are prescriptive based on statute. What our requirements are as a district to, um, put forth a budget document, have it adopted, the timelines associated with that, um, a variety of different things around the budget process and the document itself. The, there, there's a variety of other, uh, um, policies that we can talk about here. But those are the main ones that are in place. And I will say, as I was looking through these, preparing the, uh, memo, many, if not all of those policies that I just listed have not had any significant changes for quite some time. So I think it would be worthwhile to have a review of those policies updates. Some of them have old dates that don't apply anymore. Like on the, the budget adoption, it lays out the calendar and what those dates should be. There's some, um, some cleanup, some updating that should take place in the existing policies. I will say that, uh, first and foremost. So, the budget document that, uh, that we prepare each year, Laura Lee has that pulled up, I'm sure up there, is a, as you can see, a forty-page document. There's no magic in the number of pages here. Um, meets all the statutory requirements that are called for and what the budget, um, needs to include that's presented. Um, it has all of that. That being said, um, as we take a, a brief look at some of the other districts that are out there. So you'll see, uh, I've included Windsor's budget document, Pooter's, Greeley's, and Adams twelve five-star. Westminster is another, uh, good example out there. They range from twenty-five pages to two hundred and sixty pages, um, in their document. So, it, we're not going to belabor the point here. I think they're available for the board and the community to have a look through those. There is some good, um, information that's presented in some of the other districts. One of the things that I really think is lacking in, in our, um, document, and this is my responsibility, um, is that to hand this document to a layperson and expect them to look through and say, oh yeah, I understand exactly what that is. It has all the financial information in there that's required. And it, it spells it out by fund. It has per pupil amounts. It has FTE information. It has non-FTE information. It has all the funds. Um, I'm trying to think, if you look through our document, I doubt there is one picture, one graph, one pie chart.
Is there any color?
So in, in my mind, in my mind, it's a perfect document.
I can cut and taste a little Grimes and Nicholson.
So, that being said, um, there are, there's a lot to be said for having a pie chart that shows, here's all the funds and where the funding from the entire district comes from. Here's how much is school finance. Here's how much is MLOs. Here's how much is grants. Here's how much is nutrition services. There's benefit in having those. And as you look through the various districts that have, um, information or their budget documents, they meet all the legal requirements as well. And then having some level of narrative to just describe it to the average user that could be looking at this document, um, to have an idea of what the, what the priorities were. Um, I can tell you, um, on one page, and I think Pooter has it in theirs, on one page they list their assumptions, which is largely driven by the School Finance Act, what, what our funding from the state from a PPR level is going to look like. What our property tax situation is, which influences the MLO collections that we have, although we're reaching the maximums on those. But that would be good to spell out to the community. The, the two thousand six, uh, MLO is capped at a certain amount and by both a dollar amount and a mill levy rate amount. Now, the average user might not know what a mill levy rate is or, um, anything like that. But at least it's laying out those parameters, as you can see that Laura Lee has pulled up right there. Just some of the key items that are the assumptions that go into the budget from a revenue standpoint. And then eighty to eighty-five percent of our budget, if you look across all funds, is salaries and benefits. So, we can put what the, what the, uh, through negotiations, um, what the, what is reached, the agreements that are reached there, um, what those parameters are, what those assumptions are in the budget. So, again, just providing more detail. Um, I will say, um, I know during budget season, the board probably gets tired of seeing me at, uh, every meeting to say, here's, uh, an update on revenue. Here's an update on, on, um, staffing levels. Or here's an update on state legislature where it's at in the process. Um, so, I, I think we have a lot of, of updates along the way and updates to the board as well. As, as we know, when we, um, step into executive session on those sessions that I'm invited into, it's seeking the board's feedback, um, to give some information on what we, um, what the desires, what the goals, what the, uh, um, areas of interest are from the board's perspective on, uh, compensation or benefits, um, primarily in those, those sessions. So, I say all that with, um, the understanding that, um, I think our document, um, I, I, I don't think, I know, our document could use some non-accounting, um, refreshing, um, to take place. So I am committed to doing that, uh, in the, the upcoming budget season for the twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, and I think it will make it a much more user-friendly and readable document for not just us, uh, us financial types, but those that want, might want to read the first three pages and say, just give me an overview here and that's all I need to know about it. But I think it gives a clearer picture, um, if we, um, i- if we make some of those changes. And I'm, I'm not proposing going from a forty-page document to a two hundred and sixty-page document. I would be proposing, um, adding those ten to twenty pages that, that provide a level of detail that I think would be beneficial to the average user.
Nice.
So, uh, before we move on to the other items, I'll leave it at that. Any comments there from my, uh, my colleague, uh, my, not my colleague, my, uh, co-presenter on the.
So first, Gordon, I really appreciate, um, the conversations that we've had. And it's probably helpful that we, we can both speak, um, debit credit at the same level. At the same time, it also helps understand, you know, what the limitations are with reporting. So, on, I think it was on Monday, Gordon breathed this huge sigh of relief when he realized that I wasn't suggesting that we completely revamped the entire document all in the first go-around. Because I understand that you may have a goal of wanting a different report, but you have to step back and go, how was all of our account codes, program codes, all those object codes? Do we have what we need? So sometimes it takes longer. Um, one of the reasons I like some of these other, like Greeley's six and Westminster is what makes their document longer is that they have, they have a page for every school in their district. It has the school's logo. It has some graphics. It has the demographics for that school. And then it goes into the funding per, um, student from all sources. And each of these districts do it a little bit different. But I've heard from many parents that they just wanna know like what, how does my school, what does my school have? Well, how is it getting the money from all the sources? You know, the mill levy override. Um, Gordon and I were both looking at one of these where it actually listed out a list for the mill levy. And it showed line by line for the different years. I can't find it in here. Um, the detail of what the mill levy override for previous years and the current year was gonna be spent on. And it went into things like roof replacement, but it was very, it was very specific. Whereas, you know, currently, yes, it's numerically correct and statutorily correct that we're saying, here's the mill levy money that we're getting and here's, and we're spending it. But so, some of the other districts, they go into a little bit more detail, which I think is all I ever really hear is that people just wanna have a little bit clearer sense of where is the money going, where is it going, how is it going to my school or? And in a way that, um, is easy to read. A lot of these graphs make it super easy to just look at it. You know, Gordon and I, we can look at, you know, the non-FTE budget part that's rows and rows and rows of numbers. And we can make sense of it. One of the other things that some of them do is that when they do that non-FTE, they, it's still all that adds up to the same dollars, but they group it together by, um, engineering, music, uh, reading, and it might have math for middle school, elementary, high school. So it mute, and so it breaks it down. So when it says student instruction, yes, everything that Gordon's putting in that section is actually student instruction. But the other districts, they summarize it and group it into words that make sense. Somebody will look at and go, I know exactly that this, this is how much money's going into science. This is how much money's versus, you know, seeing all of those other rows that we currently have. It's, it does all go there, but you just, it's hard for the average person to see it. And so that's just one of the reasons that I've been driving, driving this. Because I think the more people can easily see and understand it, and it's part of strive that we say we want the average layperson to be able to look at our documents, um, and really know what it means. I think that's, I think that's important. And I appreciate that, um, Gordon has been willing to humor me. Um, it's always, yeah, I know people won't believe it, but us accountants, we really are creative. We really, we just get creative with numbers, that's all.
We're people too.
I think I just created a meme.
I think there was just a chasm that developed within the academy. Just a couple of other comments that I'll add about this. Um, the, this is not dissimilar to our annual report or the ACFOR, the, uh, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Again, it's very prescriptive on what has to be in there from an audit perspective. But some districts have a five-hundred-page annual report. I think ours is about a hundred and fifty pages now. Um, and I have, uh, spent the time over my nearly ten years in this role, um, gleaning as much as I could from other districts, um, other CFOs that I'm, uh, familiar with, that I work with, that I talk with, on, on a variety of different things. A, a different way to present a piece of information or the, the pie chart rather than just a table of numbers. Um, this I don't see as anything different than that. Um, and I think we, we could put forth a document that is not only factually and statutorily correct, as Nancy said, but is a, a bit more user-friendly. So, as I shift gears now, then, um, part of this is, um, there's one particular policy, um, that it, some districts have, there's a lot of districts that don't have. As I look through, and I didn't look at all a hundred and seventy-eight districts in the state of Colorado, but there's some that have policy DVD and some that don't. So Greeley is one of the, the neighbor, neighboring districts that has this policy. And, and again, it's in the attachments. You can look th- through and see what that, what that document, um, actually has in it. It lays out in just a bit more detail, um, uh, it, it is in detail of determination of budget priorities. Um, the, when you get down to the enumerated list, accordingly, the budget prepared and presented by the superintendent shall. And then it has, uh, twenty items that are listed there. I would say that in our budget, we have eighteen of those twenty items probably as I look through there. We don't enumerate them. Um, as I look through this particular policy, there's a lot of things that we have, um, that, that we incorporate in our report anyway. So, um, I don't wanna, to lead that discussion, a, a policy discussion is a board decision, not a staff decision. Um, and certainly, uh, serving at the will of the superintendent and the superintendent at the will of the board, um, we, we want to be, um, cognizant of that and, and comply with whatever we need to, um. I guess I'll, I'll leave it at that. Nancy, I don't know if you have anything to add there?
My only thoughts on this policy is just simply putting in policy that there is more of, uh, a collaborative work on what are the, the priorities for the budget. I mean, we all have that generic, that overall pr- uh, priority. We want to make sure that for the mo- that what money we have, that we can educate the most kids the best possible way. This just kind of highlights that the budget, not getting in the weeds, but working with, um, cabinet and the superintendent, kind of talking about what are those priorities that we want for this coming year? And maybe this year it might be, let's really make music a priority. Or let's really make expanding, um, Jesse's, uh, Family School Partnership Program. Or let's make, um, adding, um, making sure that we are providing the right education and the tools needed for many of the students in the district who are dyslexic. Or those really specific priorities that just gives a little bit more direction to Gordon and his team. And then as, you know, that we go through the budget process. I mean, that, to me, that's my only thought about this policy.
Okay, thoughts from people? Uh, yeah, no, go ahead, cause I just have a question and I'm gonna save it for later.
Um, so how much time is spent today for people hours or to prepare the budget as is? And then what, what's that process look like?
The process will start in mid-December and finish end of May, beginning of June. Um, it's not one hundred percent of the time. We don't, uh, break down our, our tasks because we still have to pay people. We still have to pay vendors. We still have to issue POs. We still have to do financial reporting on a monthly basis, um, all those things. So we don't break it down into, um, into that level of man-hours that go into the budget. But I can tell you it is a substantial undertaking, the budget and the, um, annual comprehensive financial report that we do, the audit and the resulting report.
Yes, I was looking through some of the, um, items, um, and I definitely was like, well, this is an annual report. Um, and I like information. Um, and I like information very much and. But is there a tip, I mean, clearly they already have two documents. Um, so in serving different purposes, how much do they need to serve the same purpose or provide the same information?
Um, they, they do contain a lot of the same information. The budget would be what we plan to do, the annual report is what we did do um as a district. I think that's a good way to uh look at it. And it, it compares, both of them have comparisons to budget to actual and actual to budget. Or what prior year actual was as the budget is being built. Um, I should explain, I th- I think maybe to your, to your question, some of the process that we use. So um we start with, uh, there's a variety of pieces and there's a variety of staff that are involved. Not just in business services, but HR is involved, um operations is involved from a planner perspective. So it, the basic item that we start with is what do we expect our enrollment to be next year by school? So we start with that because that determines a lot of things. That directly influences our per pupil revenue or our, our school finance act funding. It is also the, the starting point for building staffing plans for the, the, all, all of the schools. So we start with enrollment, what expected enrollment is, we have ratios that we start looking at. Dr. Sebers and his team in HR um develop staffing plans according to, we probably have four or five or six FTE-only meetings, which has uh Dr. Schneider from um Learning Services. Um, we have HR representation, we have finance representation to start looking at what the, the enrollment looks like because that drives a lot of the staffing. And then the, the staffing spreadsheet that we have has, that's the, the basic that we need. We know we need this for staffing for operation of any school. Now, is it a title school? Is it a dual-language immersion school? Um, do they, are they an IB school? There's different staffing levels that go into that. Um, we have a column for each one of these different items. So starting to build that, that whole picture from an FTE standpoint. That gets us how much staff we need. Then we start applying the, the compensation piece and the benefits piece. What, what does that number of FTE, what does that look like it's going to cost us? Here's what it would be if we're at right now. Here's what, if, based on school finance and based on statutory increase, amendment twenty-three increases that say that per pupil revenue has to increase at the rate of growth plus inflation. So what's our inflation rate? What do we think our increase may be in funding? Are we having declining enrollment or increasing enrollment in some schools? Um, it, it's a uh, a vast process um to, to start pulling those pieces together. Then on the non-FTE side, we have a template for each department. Um, and really within the departments, there's sub-templates that go into that. We s- we have budget meetings with the budget directors from each one of those teams, hearing their priorities. We think this is a priority, we need more, more of X at this school and less of Y at this school. Um, one of the things that uh really changed from when I started in this role was we had this amount budgeted last year in this specific line item and we have to have it in there for next year. And one of the things I tried to get across to people is no, let's, let's get things budgeted where you need them. Yes, there are constraints on the total, you can't just throw everything you want in there. But if you don't need as much in this line item or it's less of a priority and you need it in this line item, absolutely make those changes. So this is not a finance-driven, I, I would say it's a finance-initiated document, but not a finance or business services-driven process because we want input from the biggest stakeholder group within the organization that we can have. And that includes the Board of Education for the direction that, that we would receive from, from you from a compensation or any other um standpoint.
Okay, I have a question then. Based on what you've said, does every school have their own budget? Every school would have that, that level of information, so we wouldn't need to add a page for every school? If every school does have a budget, correct? Of some sort?
To, to some degree, yes. What's budgeted at that individual school might not be a full robust, like our, our full financial reporting.
But it wouldn't need to be, would it, for a school?
We tell them, they're, we don't tell them. Dr. Sebers works with the schools on, here's the, the staffing, um staffing plan that has been developed. What do you see, what challenges do you see with this? Where should it be changed? Um, some districts have a school-based budgeting where they say, school X, you get Y number of dollars and school A, you get, here's your dollars, distribute, distribute them how you want. From here's the, whatever staff you think you need, whatever supplies you think you need. We take a modified site-based approach where we say, here's the FTE that we think your school needs. Dr. Sebers reviews that with the principals, is this in line? Yeah, I think we should change this, or can we change here? Can we add an interventionist? I have some discretionary positions or FTE that I can, I can move around. We don't, I think that's a better way to do it for the school's benefit because they don't have to worry about, do I have a twenty-year teacher? And a three-year teacher that I'm trying to decide between? And the twenty-year teacher is higher on the salary schedule than a three-year teacher and my budget is tied, so I may be inclined to take a three-year teacher rather than a twenty-year teacher. I'm just saying that's an example, I'm not saying that takes place. By issuing FTE, I think it really, here's your FTE you have, hire the best person for that position and we handle the costs at the, at the centralized level for the dollars. But they have the FTE.
And if I could just follow up real quick, just to your point. Um, one of the things as far as like time would go, if you do look at some of these examples, basically it, it is kind of like the same as the annual um report. So it's, you're using the same template, so you're not reinventing the will. It's just to, your point, it's what we say we're gonna spend and then what we did. The other thing is, is even on the school budgets for each school, it's, doesn't, they don't, if you look at it, they don't go into like the same kind of detail district-wide. But it at least gives a good idea to parents, you know, what, what is the staffing there? What is the school instruction supply um budget per pupil? How do they come up with it? And some of it does change based on the demographics of the school. And that allows the parents to see, you know, what, what is the money coming into our school? And again, it's really just about trying to figure out from the community, what, what is the info? There's, there are so many different examples, what matters to people most? And every community is gonna be different and you can see that in these different samples.
Okay, I'm gonna check over there. Any comments, questions? Alexandra?
So a couple of things, I think I definitely am in favor of, you know, making it a little bit more user-friendly and having, I th- I mean, I think going to two hundred plus pages is a terrible idea. I think having um, you know, a brief summary that I fe- I feel like most, most people wanna look at it, they wanna read, you know, three pages.
The front pages, yes.
And, and be done. And so I think having something that's three pages that summarizes it, I think is, is great. Um, I do like the idea of having the individual school things. Sort of the same as like they've created for the bond website where you can click on the school and see exactly what the dollars would be spent on and the age and stuff like that. I think that could be very useful and it's impossible to see that in the way that the budget is done now.
Right.
Um, so that I think, I, I think there's value in that. Um, as far as the like policy DBD thing, I, I don't know that I'm convinced that that's necessary. I mean, I think we do have a lot of, even though it's not like formalized, I feel like we do have a lot of interaction throughout, like throughout the negotiations process and throughout the other processes about sort of what, what priorities are. So I don't, I don't have strong feelings about that, but I don't, I don't feel like it's something like the yes, we absolutely must, must have this.
Any thoughts?
Um, so those are kind of my thoughts.
Thank you. You didn't have anything right now?
Oh, I do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, okay, sorry, you'll have to wait.
I'm happy to wait.
I would just say, um, I, I'll give a, an example of why we've gotta make sure brevity is baked in to whatever design choices are made. My daughter took my phone away from me when I opened the two hundred and fifty-page document and said, I gotta read this tonight. She said, no, you won't. If we're, if the intention is to make something that's user-friendly length is a, is an essential piece of that. So I, I would agree with you that like some of those things can be very helpful and, and the pictures are nice. But as a process engineer, I will tell you that every time that we are duplicating data, which includes even putting a graph in for a table, uh you now increase your risk of being inaccurate. We've doubled now the data that's presented. And that's um something that concerns me when I think about how much time you already spend with it. And um it's pretty easy, 'cause I love pictures, to say, sure, just put them in. But I know that there's nothing light about how you put your work. And so I just wanted to make sure that I said that part out loud because everything that I ask you to put in a picture unless it comes from a stock photo is gonna be doubling the amount of work that you're doing. And I know that that is true whether you say it's not or not. Um, and that concerns me a lot.
It takes a table to present, to prepare the graph.
Yeah, that's true, but even still, like, there is that translation piece, right? Um, and so I, I do like that and wanna have a balance on that. And also, we're not the source of so many of these things, right? Like, y- you're compiling from other sources. And so I think of like, you know, people complaining about how complicated the Colorado School Finance Act is. Thank you for trying to put it in English. Um, but like pointing to some of those resources instead of us creating our own is helpful too, right? If people wanna understand some of those things, there are some resources that can help with that. And I love the idea of helping people be more um data-literate by pointing them to a place where they can get that answer for themselves as well, especially if we trust a resource. And I think that there are some good ones out there. Um, so that's a way that I got of trying to balance some of what we've been asking for here. Um, and so thank you for humoring um the feedback on how complicated this is. God bless you for taking on school finance in Colorado. And the fact that you keep showing up to do it, it's amazing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Stu, and then I'll, can you do anything? Okay, Stu?
I have some questions about the committee. The committee that was uh suggested in the information. My first question is, and my first question actually is tied to something that Alexandra said. If a parent at a particular school were to call you to ask questions related to school, a school budget, could you provide the answers to someone who wanted information about a specific school?
Yes.
Okay.
We have that information in our system that uh from what we historically have done, plus how we budget, we could talk about FTE, the FTE staffing, what's beyond the typical ratio, just the ratios, um what their supply budget is, their instructional budget versus non-instructional budget that the district or the principal has discretion on. Um, yes, those questions could be answered.
My next question is, do you feel you need a committee to help you decide on changes that are necessary in the content of the budget? You told us a few minutes ago that after examining some of the budgets from other school districts, that you have ideas of things that you can do to make ours more readable, maybe more transparent, et cetera. Do you need a committee composed of members of the community, et cetera, to help you do that?
I would say I, I think that's more of a board-driven decision um for the Board of Education to decide, not a, a but-humble CFO to make that determination.
So I'm gonna go back to what you said, that you have already created some ideas. You've come up with some ideas of things that you think would be helpful to make our budget more readable and more user-friendly and so on. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
In looking at the roles and responsibilities of this budget, um, the BAC, I don't remember what the BAC is.
That committee we have already, isn't it?
If I, no, if I could, I, we didn't talk about that. So the example you see is the last attachment is the example for of what a, um, the parameters it could be around a budget advisory committee.
Yes.
This is very similar to um, uh, not very similar. Some districts have this, uh, some version of this in place, others do not. Um, I would say, based on my, and this is not a scientific study, I would say more districts don't have it than do.
Okay.
But it is certainly not uncommon for a district to have some sort of financial advisory committee, budget advisory committee, something like that. It's not unusual to have that, but there, it, it's not required or mandatory either.
Or usual, you just said.
Um, I would say probably out of the hundred and seventy-eight districts, again, just based on my perception, there are more districts that do not have that than do, but we have a lot of small rural districts. Um, some of our neighbors, some do, some don't.
And then finally, looking at these roles and responsibilities, the first two, um, and if the board is looking at this particular thing as I am, they may find it helpful. It's, I don't think it's necessary. It strikes me as the first two bullets really are board responsibilities. And the last three, uh, I think we might be hard-pressed to find community members who would bring the type of expertise to a committee like this to be able to do what those last three bullets um line out. And that's, that's just my opinion. Um.
Well, first I, 'cause I wanna appreciate you. So I'm the one who wrote this and I just, it was just my first crack at it, just to, for, to have a starting, 'cause I've never done something like this.
Uh-huh.
Um, and so I don't know that the idea is to have a board advisory committee of citizens that are all accounting experts. They would all be citizens from all different walks who have different ideas of what, what's important to them and how can we incorporate it so that we, we get a good feel, a good input from the community of what matters to them. And this would be very much board-directed, like whatever the priorities we set were for the year, that's what this committee would focus on, like, well, okay, how do we make tho- those priorities happen with the money that we have? Um, and Gordon, when I, him and I talked, I just threw out eight times, I was just thinking of the months that we'd focus on the budget. But he said there are some districts that only do it, if they do have this, they may only meet four times, some are six times. So again, this is just a starting place for a conversation. It may not go anywhere, but at least it gives something to talk about.
Okay, I'm going open.
So you're not suggesting, or you and Gordon are not suggesting that the roles and responsibilities listed here would, are ones that you would recommend for our district? These are just some that you've thought of?
Well, these are, these were one as I was writing it down, these are just ideas that came to me. It might be that we, as a board, say, I like this part or I like this, but what if we, what if we changed it? I mean, it's, at least gives a conversation starting point. Instead of just sitting here going, how about a budget advisory committee? I'm just trying to give some starting basis.
And then if I can ask just one, one final question?
Okay, we've gone way over our time on this, so go ahead.
Would you rather I didn't?
Well, no, go ahead, you've brought it forward now.
Well, you haven't heard it yet, but shall I ever say that?
Let me see it.
It is the request from this committee or for this committee um coming from the community? And I guess I'm asking you this, I'm asking Dr. Schaefer this, I, I'm not sure who all I'm asking this. Have members of the, of the community actually approached someone in the district and said, we need a committee to do the types of things that Nancy has enumerated here? And the reason I'm asking this question is that I remember that the last time that there were two uh budget meetings uh for the community, three people came to the first one, I believe you told us. And when we had the one uh at the board meeting, no one came. So I'm wondering how much interest there is and if there is angst in the community. So I'm wondering how much interest there is and if there is angst in the community that makes this particular suggestion important, I guess is what I'm saying.
I can answer, uh, or, um, confirm the numbers that you said for the budget, um, budget forums that are offered. Um, and it's typically at the end of the process when the, um, the budget is not completed but nearing completion, to give an overview of, to be able to answer that layperson's question. Um, so I've done these, um, I believe, every year that I've been in the district, um, maybe not, uh, I think I did the first year even, I I, um, came in in the middle of the budget cycle the first year. Um, and I've offered, um, typically two a year, sometimes just one a year. Um, ten attendance at those has been, maybe at the high point, um, eight or ten people that attended and at the low point, no people that attended. Um, the past year, there were three, um, one was a reporter, one was, um, the chair of the, uh, master planning committee and his thirteen-year-old daughter, who was actually very engaged in, um, and actually had a couple of questions, um, as well, so. From that perspective, um, I would also say, um, that in my position, questions that I field from the public, um, uh, one year at one of the budget meetings, um, I typically wait, uh, twenty minutes after start time to see if anybody shows up and if not, then I assume nobody's interested. Um, this, this was two or three years ago, um, I was just ready to, um, pull the plug, as they say, and I looked in the parking lot and somebody was pulling in and he came in and, uh, the gentleman came in and I said, are you here for the budget forum presentation? And he said, yep, I am, and I said, great, you, I'm glad to give you a, you get the one-on-one attention. He said, I have one question. And he asked me the question, I I couldn't even tell you what the question is now, and I answered it and he said, thanks, that's all I needed. And left.
Stu, the, uh, in my time here, in my first year in the district, um, there were, uh, three board-initiated, um, advisory committees that were launched. Um, one being CBOC, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, one being the Mill Group, and then at the time, board member Dave Levy
Mm-hmm.
also wanted a, an audit, a budget audit advisory committee.
Yeah, that's what it was.
So, uh, in one year, we launched three, um, kind of citizen oversight committees in in those areas and then since then, I, uh, m- not aware of any.
So, in answer to what I asked, the, um, the various sessions have been sparsely attended.
Yes.
Scattered over all the years, then.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm done, I'll talk to you after the meeting and explain why I asked.
Okay. Um, okay, so, we've done almost an hour on this and the intention was twenty minutes. So I'm gonna ask for an indication, I need to have some kind of an indication of whether we're in support of a budget committee that's been presented to us. And if we are, then we need to have some indication of that in order to move forward. So I'm gonna just do a real quick thumbs up, thumbs down, if you're interested in a budget committee as described, I need to see a thumbs up or else just do a thumbs down. It's not a vote, it's just an indication of interest. Yeah, I'm this.
I'm in the middle.
Okay.
I'd like to learn more about it.
You can have a one-on-one with our friend right here.
Okay.
You're the budget person anyway, you're, aren't you our budget?
Uh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that's good, I can understand that you would have that. Okay, so we're going to draw closure on this discussion for now and, um, move on to our next item.
The other, uh, we also have, uh, the budget pow- the policy, uh, DBD, which was also, um, is there?
Thank you. Is there interest in the the DBD policy? Okay, so no interest.
I would, I would think that could be part of that narrative piece that we talked about adding as like.
It could be, as long as it doesn't cause Gordon to have to create a committee, uh, cre- create a big form that would
Right.
elaborate on that, so, yeah, I think that that's not something we want to add more work on, especially cause you're gonna put some pictures in.
And words.
And words, yes, okay, thank you.
Kids, kids, please. Thank you.
All right, yes. Um, Melissa, Dist- District Accountability Committee.
Yes?
It's your turn.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. I think I'm last. I have an update for you regarding our district accountability committee. Um, as you know, this, uh, committee, uh, is a statutorily required committee that touches on all parts of STRIVE twenty twenty-five. And I just wanna jump straight to, um, some some background here, which I had the pleasure of speaking with you all in, uh, your retreat, I believe that was in August. It feels like a really long time ago, but it was just last month, a month ago, a one month ago. And we had the conversation around how DAC brings force, the recommendations and celebrations to you each year. You heard from the DAC this past spring and our DAC chair, Brian Hurley, presented to you the recommendations and celebrations. Uh, we talked about a form of two-way communication and in which the DAC is very interested in hearing you, a response from you all around, uh, what could they work on, what do you think of these recommendations and so forth? So, I do want to, uh, come back to you with a DAC charge draft because I got information from you indicating what you were interested in from the recommendations and celebrations. So here I am with that. As I noted when I spoke with you at the, um, retreat, uh, some of the recommendations were perfunctory, things that we were, uh, tasked with by the state anyways, from academic achievement and that sort of thing. However, the DAC did have some of their own interests that you were also very interested in as well. So I've summarized them in these two statements. So, uh, you can take a look at these, I'm looking for your, um, kind of affirmation around, yes, this is indeed what we had talked about. So, study climate and culture survey results and make recommendations that will strengthen students' sense of belonging and study student engagement data trends to promote positive behavior, student engagement, uh, student engagement includes attendance, learning behaviors and discipline. So I have those for, um, a DAC charge and I will tell you that, um, they are very excited about the potential, uh, areas of focus for this year based on the recommendations. They knew I was going to be coming to you tonight, uh, to, and get these, um, charges solidified.
I wanna tell you, your method of sol- soliciting that information was really done well and you can see how engaged they were with that conversation.
Oh, from DAC the other night?
Yeah, from DAC the other night, it was, yeah, it was really.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam President. Um, that leads me actually right into, uh, my next slide. I wanna just give you a very brief update on the committee because we've only had one meeting this year and it was, uh, absolutely wonderful, engaging committee that collected a lot of information from the DAC uh, about the various topics that, number one, we have to study as part of statutory requirements, but also getting questions and perspectives from them around areas that I can then give to our presenters who come to us throughout the year and they can actually have some of their questions answered in the presentation or be ready to engage with a presenter around things that they're curious about. We've earmarked, um, two full meetings this year to address the DAC charge with a half of the meeting in the spring as well to wrap that up and be able to come back to you with recommendations and celebrations in the spring around this this topic, as well as any others that the DAC are interested in recommending to you. So I wanna just give you that that summary here. Um, as you know, I spoke to you this summer and some two-plus-twos, um, around shaping our, uh, and updating our policy to twenty twenty-four statutory language and responsibilities. That policy's name is accountability and commitment to accomplishment and consolidating that, uh, policy to be able to actually reflect the the operations of of DAC as they are now currently. I'm still working on that and will be prepared to bring that back to you with some membership re- recommendations later this fall. Uh, we are in the middle of soliciting, uh, membership recruitment and have, uh, taken in interest forms from members. We will do that again at our next meeting. Uh, you've asked me to collect some demographic information on memberships, so I will have that for you as well when I come back to you with, um, membership information as well. Um, as part of trying to consolidate our, um, AE and our AE-dash-R policies, uh, we may look at some ways to be able to have membership role on a consistent cycle, which was feedback that you also gave me in the summertime, so that we have, uh, not a staggered group of of members, but in conjunction with, um, just the the one-year membership and and the actual cycle that the state acts asks DAX to do on an annual basis, uh, we'll come back with you with those recommendations as well here this fall. So, um, I am looking really forward to this year, we have a great chair and co-chair of DAC and, uh, they've helped to be able to create the discussions that we're having that gathers input from the members, so I'm we're thrilled. I just wanted to give you that update, just on one meeting only, but it it is, it was a really exciting evening and we, uh, extended our meetings to a two-hour, um, time and it didn't feel like we were drinking from a fire hose. It actually felt like a, a nice two-hour amount of time for people to actually, um, we actually began with with dinner, we shared dinner and then we, um, had time to just mix with each other and and hear each other's ideas, so. Any questions for?
Nancy? Alexandra?
Oh, s- so, the s- sense I'm getting is that when you you presented our charge to them and they are okay with.
I haven't presented the charge yet, but I did indicate to them that you had areas of focus that you were interested in.
Oh. Okay.
I wouldn't call it an o- official charge yet before you all approved it, but I did share with them, I attended your retreat. I've, I, uh, asked for some areas of focus and that you had indicated that that those areas of focus around the culture and climate and those pieces that they recommended were of high interest to the board, so. They already began to talk about how they're they're really excited that you had some input on those recommendations. So I get to go back with, to them at the next meeting and share this as the official charge.
Okay.
Okay.
Dawn?
Thank you, very meaningful.
Thank you. Denise and Stu. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Nicely done. Okay, our last item is, um, just review of our board committees for twenty-four, twenty-five and to just check in and see if there's any changes or questions or concerns that anybody has with their committees as, what's far as what they're working on. It's just a check-in more than anything, we don't have to change anything, it's just if there's somebody who needs some help with something or whatever, I I did go through and check and Amy, I have a couple. I only have two, Stu has two, Denise has two and Alexandra, Dawn and Nancy have, um, three. You still okay with the three that you have?
Can I ask Dr. Sebers a question real quick on it? On the, on the one committee that we're, on the thirteen,
Thirty thirty-eight.
Are we still, cause I know there was discussion at the very last meeting about, should this continue because a lot of the stuff was done?
No, the, the committee still has to continue be, because there needs to be a educator-facilitance committee in the district.
Okay. Yeah.
So it's three times, I think, is what we're scheduling.
Okay. Yeah. Hey, anybody else? No? Awesome. All right, we are at the end, um, any topics that you want for the future? And I know Melissa's gonna work with us on that as she starts through everything we gave her at our retreat.
A reminder to the board that we do have our community, a board community listening session, uh, scheduled for next week.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday at six, this is from, nope, six to seven thirty.
Oh, wait. That's right.
Um, we will have three rooms. Um, I wanted to check in with the board, the retreat we had talked about, um, either having specis- like, topic-specific rooms or do we just want gen- gen- uh, general, generic rooms and let people ask the questions they want?
I think they should be general, kids should talk about what they want to agree.
Great, in general, they shall be.
Okay, I have one thing to share, I don't know if any of you've noticed this, but Moonlighting Teachers is coming up, it's just three weeks away, something like that, and tickets are going fast, fast, fast.
I've embedded the, I'll send you your update tomorrow with this.
It's, oh, you put it in, okay.
The ticket link in there.
Yeah, because if you want a ticket, you need to jump on it, so. Otherwise, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.